Well, good evening and welcome to the Tempe City Council, regular council meeting here in the Tempe History Museum for November 7th, 2019. Those that are able, could you please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, as I stated earlier, welcome to the November 7th, 2019 council meeting. We know that some of you here tonight are here to speak about a police incident that was reported yesterday involving Mr. Okri. There will be an opportunity to hear in each and every one of you at the end of the council meeting. I will treat everyone fairly and call the cards in the order that they have been received, and each person will have up to three minutes to address the council. So to speak, please throw out a comment card, which can be found in the back of the room here, and please hand it to our city clerk. There are also residents here this evening that have business on tonight's agenda. We have to consider their business, but I will move as quickly through the agenda as I can so that we can have your chance to hear everyone speak. Guidelines for the conduct at the city council meetings are available in the back of the council chambers, and continued disruptive behavior would lead to removal of the council chambers, and we need to be able to hear everyone in the room. So behavior that does disrupt or disturb or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the council meeting is not helpful and also is not permitted. So with that, I would turn to item number three on our agenda. Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move approval of item 3A1.
It's been moved by councilmember Savage and seconded by councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Mayor, I'd like to move for acceptance of items 3B, 1 through 10.
Second.
It's been moved by councilmember Arredondo Savage, seconded by councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. That motion does pass. Next, I will come down to the podium for some reports and announcements.
Well, is Jim Gra...
There he is.
Jim, come on over here, please. Jim is such a valuable member of our community, and he is also known for his work as chairman of the Tempe Veterans Day Parade and coordinating efforts with the City of Tempe, with the American Legion, the VFW, the Tempe Elks, and the parade's major commercials, sponsors. Jim's commitment to veterans issues begins with his service in the Army from 1966 to 1969. After his tour, Jim returned to complete his service at Fort Hood, Texas. While there, Jim took flying lessons and became a licensed private pilot. Jim later received his commercial pilot's license and flew commercial chartered flights out of Sky Harbor. Jim has had a consistent goal through the years to foster and maintain the welcoming atmosphere that Jim felt when he was a young veteran and watching the Veterans Day Parade. Anytime when some communities have reduced their efforts to veterans programs, Tempe Veterans Day Parade continues to grow in the number of participants and in the number of residents who line the parade route. Off of the city council, Jim, and the City of Tempe, we would like to present you with a key to the city. He has dedicated 39 years to the Tempe Veterans Day Parade, and we think... Give Jim a round of applause. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
All right. With that, could we have Marilyn DeRosa, Brayden Kay, and Grace Kelly, if Grace is here? Could you please come up here as well? Last week, the City of Tempe was recognized by the Salt River Project as the SRP Municipal Partner of the Year. Tempe is very fortunate to have a community utility partner that offers programs to help us reach our energy and carbon reduction goals. The city will continue to invest in energy efficiency in our city buildings, our water treatment plants, and outdoor lighting, and invest in low-carbon transportation options. We truly do appreciate the partnership, and I want to thank our great staff for helping us get closer to our carbon reduction goals. So let's give our great staff a round of applause, and the city council for helping us adopt these measures. All right. Now, this is really, all these awards are really fantastic, but I would like to see if Chris Baxter-Ging can come forward, Nikki Ripley, Jason Wolfe, Melissa Quillard, and Tayana Yee, if you could please come forward. I have more news about an award that the city recently has received. This time, our communications and media relations team has been recognized for our very popular Instagrammies. The City-County Communications and Marketing Association has an award ceremony every year called the Savvy Awards. This year, the City of Tempe won the highest award in social media category this year. In 2020, Instagrammies will start accepting entries on November 14th. So all of you, all you need to do is take a great photo in Tempe and post it to Instagram with the hashtag #TempeInstagrammies2020. Now, I want to recognize our entire communications team and our media relations team for this true team effort. Chris Baxter-Ging, Jason Wolfe, Shannon Reed, Melissa, Tayana, as well as Suzie Stechner, who helped with the 2019 awards. Congratulations. All right. We have another fantastic award. Can Bonnie Richardson, as well as Vice Mayor QB, could you please come down? And Paulina Vu and Jim McPherson, please come down to the podium. You know, Vice Mayor QB nominated Bonnie Richardson for the McPherson Award for her hard work constructing the city's urban forestry master plan. Because of Bonnie, the City of Tempe committed to doubling our tree and shade canopy. We also hired the state's and the city's first urban forester, Richard Atkins. Richard is also committed to fulfilling our shade goal, not only by planting new trees and maintaining. And Paulina Vu and Jim McPherson are also here to present Bonnie with the McPherson Award. So congratulations, Bonnie Richardson, our very own, so thank you so much. The next, as many of you know, our Hope Team is a critical component to addressing homelessness, the homeless population here in Tempe today. If we could have Kelly Denman from the City of Tempe Homeless Outreach Specialist. Kelly, you can come forward. Now, today, I'm very proud to help recognize and celebrate our veteran Hope Team member, Ms. Kelly Denman. She recently received the Kevin Collins Award for Excellence in Direct Service from the Arizona Housing Coalition. Kelly has been part of the Hope Homeless Team since 2016, when the team first was established. So on behalf of the City of Tempe, Kelly, we want to thank you for your hard work, as well as your dedication. We're lucky to have you, and congratulations on the great award for the Housing Coalition for the Kevin Collins Award.
Mr. City Manager, do you have any reports and announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, there's going to be a couple of events this weekend that I'm sure will be mentioned later in this meeting by you perhaps and other members of council, but I want to take the time to thank staff for the hours and hours of dedicated work that saw these two things to fruition. First, we'll be opening our first new fire station in Tempe, I believe since 2004, so almost 15 years. Station number seven at McClintock and Warner will be this Saturday, and I'm very well aware of the work that the chief and his staff has put in working with the contractor to make this a reality. It's not an easy thing to get a state-of-the-art fire station up and running and built, but that's certainly what's happened here, and I think it'll be a real asset to our community. So thank you for that work, to you and to your staff, and for all of the city staff that has worked hard to make the Tempe Town Hall 20th Anniversary Celebration this Friday and Saturday a success. I can say that, I think, with some reasonable optimism in that it's going to be happening this weekend. I just wanted to recognize the tremendous staff work that it takes. So once again, we're proving that the employees of Tempe are second to none. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. All the items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council, unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public-carrying items for separate consideration. Public-carrying items are designated by an asterisk. Councilmembers may remove an item for separate consideration. If you do wish to speak on a public-carrying item, please fill out a speaker's card, which can be found on the table near the entrance in the back of the room, and turn it into the front of the room to our city clerk. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. Miscellaneous items, 5A1 through 5A11. Awards and bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B13. And resolution items, 5C1 through 5C8. And I do want to pull item 5C1 for separate consideration. Is any else from the audience wishing to have a public-carrying item removed? Could you please get my attention? Anyone from the council, any items? So is there a motion on the consent agenda as read with the exception of item 5C1?
Remove.
Removed by Vice Mayor QB, seconded by councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries forward. Item 5C1 is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city council to approve and the mayor to execute the City of Tempe's Climate Action Plan. This is not a public hearing, but if it's okay with the council, can we have this as a public-carrying item? I have some cards for public comment. Is that okay? All right. I'll go ahead and call the name in the order I receive them. Tajinder Apal? Did I pronounce that correctly? Please come forward. Tell me, did I pronounce your name correctly? Is it Tajinder? Oh. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Hello, my name's Taj. I'm 20 years old, and I'm an ASU student here, and I'm terrified of climate change. I ask that you guys please vote in favor of the Climate Action Plan, and... And yeah, I'm just, I'm really scared of climate change, and I hope that you guys treat this with the moral urgency that climate change deserves. Yeah, it's pretty terrifying. And I also want to comment on the plan itself. I think it's an amazing thing, and I think we definitely need to move forward with it, but I also want to make the point that I don't think it's enough, and I want to just express some skepticism towards some of the points of the plan. So I was just reading through it a little bit here. I'm not super educated on it, but I saw that one of the first points was that we're trying to make Tempe more energy efficient. And I just want to make the point that, like, our society has become more energy efficient, like, since we've been developing these resources, like, efficiency has constantly been improving, but at the same time, our environmental footprint has also been getting bigger and bigger. And so there's kind of like a disconnect there. We think that increases in efficiency are going to actually make us more sustainable, but that's often not the case. And if you look at nations across the world, you'll see that the nations that are most efficient in GDP per carbon emission, the most efficient nations are also the nations that have the largest environmental impact. And so I just want to say that, like, I don't know if a climate action plan is ever complete, or I don't know if a climate action plan will ever be effective unless we address the insane amounts and disgusting amounts of economic growth that goes on here, because growth is so often associated with increasing environmental impact. And so I just think we should consider perhaps reeling back that growth and consider the implications of that growth. Consider if continual and infinite economic growth is ever going to be compatible with the sustainability of our planet. So, yeah, those are my comments. Please vote in favor of the Climate Action Plan. It's a moral dilemma. Hope you guys treat it with the urgency it deserves. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Brian Messinas, and if you can, can you speak closer to the microphone so we can hear you? And please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Hello? Is that better?
Yes.
My name is Brian Messinas. I'm a freshman at the Arizona State University Tempe campus, although I, during the summer, live up in Phoenix. So I'm also an organizer with the Arizona Youth Climate Strike. And I just wanted to take a moment to comment the City of Tempe's Climate Action Plan and say thank you to those of you that worked so hard with the Sustainability Office to develop and hopefully implement this plan, although I know some of you work harder than others. However, I also want to acknowledge that while this plan is in its first form and will continue to be updated, there is much more that could have been done and included in this plan to ensure that Tempe would have been one of the most progressive leaders in enacting a citywide plan to address the effects of the climate crisis. There is also much room left for improvement in including more voices of our communities of color that are disproportionately affected by the climate crisis, and ensuring that we go beyond greenwash talking points and achieve what we need, which is climate justice in Tempe and Arizona. As such, I would urge you to not only vote in favor of this Climate Action Plan resolution, but to ensure that there is an abundance of funds allocated for it in the budget process. Please keep in mind that many of the issues facing our environment have been exacerbated and contributed by, too, by the willful negligence of many of your generation. So please help ensure that your children, grandchildren, and those of people in my generation have the same opportunity at a safe and sustainable future that many of you have had in your lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Katia Brandier.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all tonight. I also encourage you to vote in favor of the Climate Action Plan. My name is Katia Brandier, and I'm serving on your Sustainability Commission. I just recently joined, and I had the privilege to help with some of the final touches to the Climate Action Plan. I resonate with what was said before, but I'm still very excited about this Climate Action Plan, and I have three points why I'm particularly excited. It was mentioned that this is a middle-of-the-road plan. It's very concise. It's very focused on three concrete areas, and I think that is a tremendous strength. And with this, it opens the opportunity for further discussions. It opens policy space to address exactly some of those points that were brought forth by our previous speakers, and I think this is an opportunity for us to explore these additional ideas. Second, I think a strength of the Climate Action Plan was also the way it was developed, not only within the city, but also the wide and intense public engagement efforts that were undertaken, both in-person events as well as online opportunities to discuss and comment. And I remember a recent event over in the public library. The room was packed. We had 90 people signing in, and there were maybe more people in the room. We had a large representation of our young generation. And this is my third and final point, that the energy, the commitment to work together, to be part of developing our future together, that is what I'm excited about, because I feel the Climate Action Plan opens an opportunity for us to go forward and to continue working on this together with the leadership of our council, with the leadership of our city staff, and the committed community members that we have been hearing tonight and in the preceding months leading up to today. Also, while I'm in strong support and favor of all proposed actions, I'm specifically excited and passionate about one, and that is the proposed resilient energy hub. I know from my work in other places, such as Puerto Rico after Hurricane Maria, and also New Zealand after earthquakes, it's not extreme heat as the climate crisis we are facing here, but nevertheless, these community hubs have a tremendous role to play in building community resilience, as well as in supporting community-based response and recovery. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Barbie Burke? Please state your name and place of residence for the record. If you can, be as close as you can to the mic.
How's that? My name is Barbie Burke. I live in Commodore Place in Tempe. First, I wanted to state that I've been coming to city council meetings since I was 17 years old, a senior at Tempe High, and we had a city councilman named Harry Mitchell. He had to go to three meetings to get an A in his class, which I'm happy to say I did get. So anyway, tonight, I'm here as a resident and also as a real estate broker. I am also a volunteer with Tempe Neighbors, helping neighbors, and I do serve on the Sustainability Commission. But I'm a green realtor, which is a specialty that I have, that people are more concerned about the energy efficiency of their homes and also the quality of the air and the life around them. So I strongly urge that the city council considers this and goes forward with the Climate Action Plan. I think you'd have, you would find that most residents would be very happy to see this pass. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, next, Kendon Jung? Young? Sorry. I knew it was young. Your handwriting's a little, it's like a doctor.
It's all good. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Kendon Young. I lived here in Tempe for 29 years at Wesleyan Drive, and on behalf of your Sustainability Commission, I support and encourage this council to vote in support of the Climate Action Plan. I stand before you today as many things: a 29-year resident of Tempe, a product of our Tempe education system, kindergarten all the way through university, a professional in Tempe, an advocate of Tempe, and as one of this council's, your chair for the Sustainability Commission. With that said, I also stand before you today as all of those things for the foreseeable future. On September 5th, on September 2015, just over four years ago, this council established the formation of a Sustainability Commission and appointed me, a member of your public and an educator of our future, along with 10 others, to advise and inform your government on a sustainable future. We, the Sustainability Commission, bring together, bring stakeholders together to share best practices and promote partnerships and collaborations that create sustainable solutions for Tempe and its most pressing challenges. We research and advise, recommend to you, our government, policies and programs that advance sustainability in Tempe, with particular attention to sustainability in the following 15 areas. I won't go through all of them. It is at some of the experiences that I speak in regards to the Climate Action Plan. In 2015, this leadership, this leadership of council agreed to join the covenant, or the Global Covenant of Mayors, a tremendous step forward on a renewal, on a path to a renewable energy. As part of this commitment, your staff began development on this Climate Action Plan, which is an integral part of this journey. It has been a labor of love for over two years, and I am deeply proud of what we have produced. I am proud that this plan creates policy space for us to explore the things that are most important to Tempe, like extreme heat, transportation, and energy. I am proud that this plan hosted over 16 public engagement events, meetings, and presentations, one of which had over 99 members that packed the room with people from all ages and backgrounds. I'm especially proud of my fellow commissioners and the city staff and the countless hours that was poured into this work. This is the type of effort the Climate Action deserves. We have and will continue to work closely with the Transportation Commission, as well as the Neighborhood Advisory Commission, both of which have submitted support for this Climate Action Plan. But I believe that we can do even more. I'm thrilled to say that the Sustainability Commission is coordinating future efforts and collaborations with the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission, as well as the Development Review Commission, and is looking forward to connecting with the Youth Advisory Commission and the Commission on Disability Concerns. We want to continue a robust engagement, and we'll be looking into the resources needed in order to improve upon that work that has been done and to make the 2021 update even better. So thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to address you this evening. But thank you, but even more importantly, thank you for your consideration of the Climate Action Plan that is sitting here before you this evening. It is a tremendous decision that sets an important precedent for the future of Tempe, a Tempe that values fiscal responsibility, equity, engagement in education, enterprise, and effectiveness and evidence. Many of the things that you've heard today, including the SRP Energy Award, the Urban Forestry Recognition, and the new fire station that was used as a pilot for many of the values the Climate Action Plan includes, are great examples of the Climate Action Plan already at work and brings Tempe closer to that future. And what better timing than for the 50th anniversary of Earth Day coming this spring? It has been a long journey from a diverse cross-section of your community, and then, and this middle-of-the-road plan that creates policy space for us to explore the work uniquely for Tempe, as well as elevates Tempe's leadership among our peers here in the valley, is just the precedent that we want to set for the future of Tempe. And I could not be more proud of my city, of the vision of its leaders, all of you, that has brought us here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Brian Fellows. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Good evening. My name is Brian Fellows. I'm at 1406 East Wesleyan in Tempe. I also serve as the chairman of the Transportation Commission. I'm happy to speak in favor of the Climate Action Plan this evening. We have met jointly with that commission, and we've also heard numerous staff reports from them. We feel it's a very sound plan. One of the things that we feel is that there, there's quite a bit of overlap between some of the Climate Action Plan items, action items, and things that the Transportation Commission would consider and, and could have action items on. It also affords us the opportunity to look for potential funding through the Proposition 400 extension, things such as Bus Rapid Transit, Transportation Demand Management, Trees and Shade, and Resilient Energy Hubs. And with that, I would just like to urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Dorian Garland. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Dorian Garland, Buena Vista Ranch House, and I'm chair of the Neighborhood Advisory Commission of 15 awesome community leaders. And I sent you a letter today in support of the Climate Action Plan, but I sent it really late, so I'm just going to read you the body of it, just so we have it. It says, "Dear Mayor and Council, on November 6th, the Neighborhood Advisory Commission listened to a presentation about the Climate Action Plan from the Sustainability Advisory Chair Kendon Young. After the presentation and discussion, our commission voted unanimously to support the Tempe's first Climate Action Plan. The Climate Action Plan will help Tempe prepare for climate change and problems caused from heat. Carbon neutrality, sustainable transportation, and investments in the clean energy economy will help Tempe become a more sustainable city with a vibrant economy for generations to come. The Neighborhood Advisory Commission looks forward to working with the Sustainability Advisory Commission to champion neighborhood engagement around the Climate Action Plan." Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Elliot Kemper.
My name is Elliot Kemper, and I live at 1005 East 8th Street in Tempe. That's within walking distance of the Tempe campus, ASU. I recently got my master's degree from ASU. The Tempe Climate Action Plan and the related climate action... from ASU. The Tempe Climate Action Plan and the related climate actions that we've planned and enacted are why I'm able to consider staying here, as me and my partner decide where to put down our roots for the next chapter of our life. Without increasingly decisive actions taken over time to cope with the long-term catastrophes that are bearing down on us, I honestly don't expect this desert community can survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan Morris? The non-deck, Madison W. Ryan, please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Morris. I live in North Tempe, just south of Tempe Town Lake. I'm going to keep this short and sweet. Just want to thank you all for your leadership, for the city of Tempe's leadership in the state and in the valley. This is a great opportunity. I just want to say thank you to everyone on the commission and everyone in the city staff for contributing to this, to the hundreds of residents that have attended countless events. There's been great public input and, you know, open public meetings and closed-door meetings in the commission, which are also public, and, and all around a team effort to make this a reality. I want to share that this is, you know, it's really a starting point. The Climate Action Plan is, for me, where we can start and where we can look forward to enacting and putting funds in place for policies and programs and, and pilot programs to prove what's possible. I worked for Watership Management Group, and we had an installation of a green, of a green infrastructure project on Hardy and Rio Salado. And that's just one example of a way that we can mitigate flooding and, and stormwater pollution and plant more biodiverse plants and bring generally healthier, more walkable communities to our blocks here in, in, in Tempe. You know, I think I have a lot of optimism for the city of Tempe. Like I said, this is an opportunity, so I want you all to really look at what the plan outlines and, you know, look at what's next and what's to come. The Sustainability Commission is already talking about CAP two point O and what those next steps are and how we can engage every single person in this city and in this region for everything from climate justice to divesting from fossil fuels to planting more trees and having more community engagement events. The issues of climate change are dire and pressing, and we need to act now. So I urge for your vote of yes tonight in favor of the Climate Action Plan, as well as future votes in favor of funding to support the various initiatives and programs that this will bring forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Madison. Please state your name. Place of residence for the public record.
Hi, Madison. I live in Tempe. So I didn't know that we were doing Climate Action Plan tonight. That's very cool. I got my master's in sustainability from ASU. I graduated in May, and I am super dedicated to combating climate change in my lifetime. My focus is and always has been on climate justice, because I recognize that the impacts of climate change affect working people and people of color first and foremost. And that's why I'm here, because climate change is happening because of institutional inaction, similar to the way that this institution here fails to act on police brutality. The Oakree family, including their one-year-old child, was assaulted by this police department.
Madison, I might have to ask you to, this is not, you're going to have that time.
Climate change is related to police brutality. It cannot be separated.
I'm going to ask you that nicely. You're going to have plenty of time to have that conversation. This is for the Climate Action Plan agenda item, and that's what we're taking comment on. So if you can help respect that, you'll have your time at the end of the meeting to have the comments that you have. And everyone's going to have an opportunity.
I don't believe that.
I'm going to ask you nicely.
Police brutality is recognized in the Climate Action Plan.
If you're not going to sit down, ma'am, I'm going to have to ask you to do that. Either you talk about the Climate Action Plan that we're agendized, that we're talking about right now. If you want to talk about the other issue that you mentioned, that can be done at the end of the meeting.
Is.
I'm going to ask you that one more time.
Is racism addressed in the Climate Action Plan?
Is what?
Racism. Is it addressed in the Climate Action Plan?
Equity is, yes.
Equity is. Is police brutality addressed in the Climate Action Plan?
I'm going to ask you one more time. This is, we're dealing with the Climate Action Plan. So if you can't respect that, I'm going to have to ask you to sit down.
I am aware of that. I got my master's degree connecting these two issues. That's why I'm bringing it up, because it is relevant.
I'm going to ask you, we're talking about the Climate Action Plan. We do have equity in our Climate Action Plan. So if you can respect our process of how we're doing this, we have plenty of ample time to speak to us regarding this issue.
All right.
Thank you. All right, that's all the cards I have for public comment on the Climate Action Plan, item five C one. Any comments or discussion from council? Yes, or is there a motion? Wait first. Councilmember Keating?
You go first.
No, no, you go.
No, 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 please, after you.
Well, in my councilmember moments, I have a number of people I wanted to thank. I, I spent the day with Lieutenant General Dirk, Dirk, Dirk Jameson today. He's a thirty-year veteran of the Air Force, and he works on a project to bring attention to climate, the climate crisis. And it's an unlikely source of someone shouting "fire," but he is convinced that we are in the midst of a climate emergency. And when he heard questions from the crowd today in an event we held, who asked, what should we do? What's the most important thing to do? He said, "Talk to your elected officials." He said, "I heard that Tempe is doing a Climate Action Plan. You need every city in the valley, every city in the state to do a Climate Action Plan." So the step we're taking today, I mean, I agree, it's middle-of-the-road. I agree, it is phenomenal first step. And having attended many of the Climate Action meetings, I was so impressed with the diversity of the audience and the, the age of the audience. And Brian Messinas, you are my heart and soul, like what you're doing, contributing to our, our state and our country. I am so appreciative of your leadership. So ultimately, we're taking this very first step. We're already in the midst of Climate Action two point O. There's so much to be done. It's an exciting time. And Tempe is not the first in Arizona. We're following Flagstaff's footsteps, but we're taking a giant step. And with that, I will say I am proudly in support of the Climate Action Plan tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Keating, then Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. I just kind of echo some of the comments from the vice mayor. I really want to thank Brayden, his team, and, and the Sustainability Commission, the Transportation Commission, the residents that spoke in favor and offered their input. I'm very pleased to be able to support this plan tonight. It is, it is a great step in the right direction for the city of Tempe and for our region that was mentioned. You know, the city is a desert community, and it is a rapidly growing community. I don't think it's possible to stop that growth, right, unless y'all are going to stop having kids. I'm not going to have any kids. So I'm doing my part. So now it's time for you guys to, to do your part. But I'm very pleased that we're planning for the future, you know, and we're planning for the next generation of Tempe or the next generation of our state and hopefully our planet. You guys can't see it, but I have my climate stripes tie on, and I ordered this like six months ago, and it's been sitting in my closet. I finally get to wear it. It's a very cheap tie, so I'll never wear it again. But very hard, it's very hard to tie. Took me a long time. So I'm pleased to be supporting this tonight. Thank you all that have brought us here and have taken time out of your night to come and speak in favor. That's really it. I really appreciate the fact that we're able to adopt this tonight, and it wouldn't have happened without everyone who, who took the time to contribute to the process. Thank you.
Councilmember Arredondo Savage, then Councilmember Navarro.
Okay, cool. Thank, thank you, Mayor, really quick. I mean, first and foremost, I just want to give a great shout out to those people that did a lot of the heavy lifting on this, you know, bringing this to us today, the Sustainability Commission. I mean, if you guys are here, thank you guys so much for your work and what you do. Brayden K. and Grace Kelly, you guys are always phenomenal, doing great things for the city. But, you know, first and foremost, too, I think our vice mayor Lauren Kubey, who, or QB, I always like to say QB, who really works very, very hard and brings her interest and her knowledge to the city of Tempe, always wanting to do what's right for our community. So I certainly do appreciate that. And I think as a community, we need to make sure that we are creating awareness and, and that we're doing our part. And we want to make sure that we have the opportunity to evaluate any type of strategies, I think, when the opportunity arises. So I think this is definitely a step in the right direction. The one thing, I don't want to be like a Debbie Downer, but I, I did notice through all the background material and all the public meetings, there was one thing that was missing. And being a former chair of the Tempe Chamber, I know whenever there is support by a local group like the Tempe Chamber, they have to go through the board, and there are certain steps to be able to get approval. And I noticed that in here, they're quoted as a significant partner, as a key contributor. So I just have a chance to call them and say, hey, did you guys forget or what's going on? But apparently, we haven't had the opportunity to meet with the chamber yet, or, or the downtown authority. So I would just say, before this actually gets printed and their information is in here, I would say, let's take the time to go meet with them, make sure that they're on board. And same with Valley Metro, I'm a board member of Valley Metro, and I've never seen it, and Valley Metro is also listed in here. I just want to make sure that they are a hundred percent on board with us. They are going to support the strategies also, too, and hopefully spread the word. But I get it, we definitely can't do it alone. And I just want to be respectful of them and their processes, too. So if they are going to be key contributors to our success, we need to make sure that we meet with them sooner than later. So that would be my only request there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, it's, it's a real pleasure just to be up here and to be part of this. I mean, it's great that our community is taking this initiative so seriously. And, and yes, there is more to do. And the Sustainability Commission's done a great job on guiding this. And really, I want to say, thank Lauren, Lauren with her expertise and, and really kind of putting effort into this always, you know, and, and creating the Sustainability Commission. You just got real big kudos, and this is a great step. And it's a great step for our children and for kids in the future, too. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I'm just very happy about the public outreach that was done with this project. And also, I want to thank the Sustainability Commission for all their hard work, and also speak to your concerns about Transportation Commission. I think it's great if we can really work with Transportation Commission, too, because so many of the items on Sustainability Commission inter, weave with that. So anyway, I want to thank staff and Lauren Kubey for all of her hard work in leading this charge. And thank you very much.
You know, I, I can't be more ecstatic than the action that we're going to be taking tonight regarding the Climate Action Plan. It really is a guideline that will help us in our community reduce carbon emissions. And there are many strategies in this plan that will help get us closer to our goal, as well as the next step that will determine what strategies that we help, we want to help prioritize. You know, I, I really can't stress enough how important it is to work with our partners. And we saw a good part of that tonight with our partnership with SRP as a utility company that's really helping us utilize our energy. And I think we're going to need their help, as well as APS, when we look in at resiliency energy hubs, because I do believe that our most vulnerable populations in our community will need to be in a safe and cool place. And I do think that focusing on one city facility or another and making those upgrades over times makes a good amount of sense for us, and including this very complex that we're sitting in right now, the library complex. It is exciting. I'm looking forward to public-private partnerships for some of the revolving funds and some of the grant opportunities that we could help reach for the revolving fund to help be more efficient. I'm really excited to support this plan, and I want to thank Vice Mayor Kubey and the entire council for really looking at this. We are first in many communities to do a lot of things, and actually being the second one, working with the city of Flagstaff to make sure that we have a Climate Action Plan. Hopefully, other cities will follow. So with that.
We have a motion. Councilmember Adams, is there a second? Second by Vice Mayor Kubey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes unanimous. All right. Next item is our non-casent agenda. All the items listed on the non-casent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. First item six A one is to hold a first public appeal for the Development Review Commission's decision to deny a use permit to reduce the required sixty percent ground floor use requirement. Section five dash six oh six C, the ground floor uses in station areas for Tempe Metro located eleven eight, or eighteen eleven East Apache Boulevard. The applicant is Barry Riddell. This is a quasi judicial matter. So the, the council does sit as a quasi judicial body when hearing appeals. In this situation, the city council must conduct itself as a court, not as a legislative body. And pre-meeting contact with the city council on quasi judicial matters is prohibited. Any materials or conversations concerning the items shall be presented to the city council at the scheduled public hearing. So tonight, this hearing is an appeal of the Development Review Commission's decision on August twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen to deny a use permit to reduce sixty percent of the ground floor use required for Tempe Metro. If I could have Ms. Riddell come, please make a presentation, and I ask you to speak close to the mic.
I will speak louder than my normal very loud self, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Wendy Riddell with the law firm, Barry Riddell, sixty-seven fifty East Camelback. My pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of Tempe Metro. So I suspect this council is all very familiar with the Tempe Metro site. It exists at Apache and McClintock. It's, was done quite a while ago. It is along light rail. It was actually done originally by Gray Development, who is not my client, but it was done back in two thousand and five and two thousand and six. There is also a public garage component with this. Ultimately, in two thousand and eighteen, my client now has purchased this site, and we are looking for opportunities to reinvest and frankly, revitalize this existing project. So that's the purpose of our request here today, which is to reduce the ground floor requirement. I will tell you, the real purpose of our request is to activate the ground floor use. Today, when you go by, frankly, those shops, those areas have sat vacant way too long. We may have gotten there in a little different way through staff and through DRC, but I will tell you, that is truly our objective here, which is to be able to activate the ground floor. So that's as it exists today, other than the, the paint, you will notice that my client is also, we've already processed a minor DPR to be able to come in and repaint and refresh the look of this project. That's as it exists today on Apache, again, except for the paint. But what we're proposing is to have the chance then, and we've worked this out now with the planning department, with economic development, to have kind of true traditional retail space. And we've put it at two locations very strategically. The locations are to have access to light rail, kind of direct access. And they're both located as well as where you leave the project. So if you're part of the public garage, that arrow you see on the lower component, you walk right past, and the green here represents what will be commercial. And so those are the areas that we're suggesting would be the more traditional commercial. I will tell you, my client here is a capitalist. We would love to have additional commercial development come here. So the uses that we're proposing to put here to activate this space, the gym, the clubhouse, these are not, these are not units. These are not revenue-producing areas. So if there's greater opportunity as light, as light rail continues to expand, to add additional commercial, we'll be working very closely with economic development to accomplish that. So again, this is how we want it to look, where you've got more traditional commercial, the fitness, the lounge, activated space. And again, along McClintock, activated space. So we're very happy now to have, I think, worked this out with economic development, with the planning staff. Frankly, they've also been very helpful in kind of making some upgrades to the partnership, to the park and ride area for the lighting, and also working with us to find ideally a kind of pet care, doggy daycare use for the portion along McClintock, because we think that's a real need within our complex. I did want to also point out, because I know this is a very critical topic to the mayor and to the council, that this actually functions today as workforce housing. These are facts that, of the project today, this is a, a viable, existing workforce housing project in Tempe. We're just asking for a little tweak to make sure it continues to stay that way. And then very quickly, I also want to point out, because we're looking at a use permit here, we do indeed comply with the use permit criteria. You see, the use shall not cause any significant vehicular pedestrian traffic. Park and ride is already there. The traffic is already there. The traffic generated by these uses is already there. So clearly, we meet that first criteria. And then it's consistent with the surrounding commercial context, and will activate the streetscape. Again, that's exactly what we're trying to do, is to activate the streetscape. And will not contribute to the deterioration of property values, conflict with goals, objectives, or policies the city's adopted, general plans. So here, there is an issue that I know is perhaps all too familiar with the council of homelessness. And we do have that problem, particularly because we've got areas with a public garage where there can be loitering. So the more we can activate this space, I think the more success we will achieve in helping to address that issue. And that, again, is the purpose, is to activate that ground level. And it's compatible with the existing surrounding structure. So we're, we're not proposing any other changes. All the changes we're proposing are internal, with the exception of now you see kind of back to the not-so-pretty yellow. Again, that's the old color, the blue being the refreshed color, because we are committed to revitalizing this site. So with that, I respectfully request your approval. We're aware of the modified stipulations, having worked closely with economic development and planning staff, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Riddell. Councilmember Keating?
May I move, we approve the appeal with the agreed-upon modifications?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating. It's been seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Is there any other comments or discussion? But before we do that, this is a public hearing item. So before we take action on this, I do need to see if there's any public comment on item six A one. See none? Close that portion. Council, have any comments? There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Next item is item... Next item is 6A2, is to hold a public hearing for an appeal of Development Review Commission's decision to deny a use permit to allow vehicle repair and a PCC-1 zoning district and development plan review, including site plan, building elevations, and landscape plan for the Valvoline Tempe located at 8805 South McClintock Drive. The appellant is Diversified Partners. This is a quasi judicial matter. Agenda item 6A2 is designated as a quasi judicial item. The council does sit as a quasi judicial body when hearing appeals. In this situation, the city council must conduct itself as a court, not as a legislative body. Pre-meeting contact with the city council on quasi judicial matters is prohibited. Any materials or conversations concerning the item shall only be presented to the city council at the scheduled public hearing. So tonight's public hearing is an appeal of the Development Review Commission's decision on September 24, 2019, to deny a use permit to allow vehicle repair in the PCC-1 zoning district and to deny a development plan review, including site plan, building elevations, and landscape plan for the Valvoline Tempe. So the appellant is Alexandra Schuckter. Could you like to come forward and make a presentation?
Mayor Mitchell, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to speak today. Alexander Colloden, on behalf of the appellant, Colloden Law Group, the PLLC. So the mayor and council have no doubt been given the whole packet from the planning commission, and I won't repeat everything that's already been submitted. But I want to tell you a little bit about my client's project, the positive impacts it will have on South Tempe, and why the requirements for a use permit for the property have been met, a use for which the property is already zoned. This property, right now, is a dirt lot next to a Discount Tire and a Walgreens. The plaza is lousy with vehicular traffic, and the Discount Tire produces a lot of very loud noises with the heavy machinery that they utilize. Staff's reasons for recommending denial, at least the ones that haven't been addressed, are that the proposed project does not meet approval criteria 2 and 3 for the use permit and development plan review, and also does not conform with the Corona South Tempe Character Area Plan. I want to tell you respectfully why I don't believe that to be true. Tempe is a big city now, and big cities have a variety of uses. But the truth of the matter is that if this service shop does not meet the requirements of general plan 2040, no automobile service shop will ever again be able to be built in the city of Tempe, because my clients have made extreme efforts to meet the requirements of those plans and have bent over backwards to try to accommodate the neighborhood as well. When Chair Lyon asked staff to explain why the proposal didn't meet the requirements of the 2040 general plan, staff said that it didn't fulfill the type of uses that the neighborhood was looking for. And I have to tell you, our client has employed a very excellent real estate broker. You'll hear from him after me. But I understand that the neighborhood was looking for restaurant uses, and they have made extreme efforts to find a restaurant user. You'll hear from the broker that he reached out to no fewer than 16 different restaurant operators to try to obtain a restaurant tenant for this property. They all said it was the wrong space, which makes perfect sense, because the only traffic in that plaza is from a Discount Tire and Walgreens. The owner of the property even met with the managing director of the VIG and said, will you please put a VIG here? We want a use that this neighborhood really wants. And the managing director of the VIG said, no way. It's the wrong place for that use. But what the use that my client wants to put there is an automobile service center, is a use for which the property is already zoned. It's a use for which the property has been used for 30 years. Land use goal number three is that a proposed use seek balance and compatibility of new land use development with established residential neighborhoods. First of all, the subject property is not in a residential neighborhood. It's on a busy intersection that consists of four large strip malls and is immediately adjacent to a Discount Tire, Walgreens, and large self-storage facility. The surrounding area is full of similar and compatible uses. Staff noted that the proposed use is compatible with a tire and repair facility located south of the site. The prior use was a gas station and service center for 30 years. The gas station's daily use was 400 to 600. Our use is expected to have less than 50 customers a day. Almost any other use would have substantially more traffic and impact on the neighborhood surrounding it. This is an aerial view of the subject property, so you can see what I'm talking about. A large self-storage facility, Walgreens, parking lots entirely surrounding it. The other options that our broker has found that are interested in leasing a space like this are car wash of fascinations or drive-through hamburger place. And in fact, the car wash is offered 20% more rent than Valvoline would be paying. But our clients just didn't think that was the right use for the community, because it would lead to more traffic. So they chose a lower traffic, lower-impact use at the cost of rent. Land use goal number five is to provide land use and transportation-integrated planning, design, and development that reinforces and enhances the character of the entire community. The intersection where the subject property is located sees 5,500 vehicle trips a day. Appelin's proposed use directly serves this mode of transportation. Appelin has also integrated bus transit, which is the sole mode of public transportation available in the area, into its planning. And we'll talk about that a little bit later. Even the general plan's ambitious 20-minute city goal does not foresee far south Tempe becoming pedestrian-friendly as it's not within 20 minutes of any of the city's hubs. And the adjoining townhome development has even erected barriers to make it impossible for its residents to walk to the subject property using residential streets. So this is what I mean by a high vehicular traffic area. We have showing the 5,500 trips and the location of the subject property. And this is the pedestrian access on residential streets to the property. As you can see, it's completely blocked off. But that doesn't mean, however, that even in a suburban environment like this, we can't take, oh, and this is the 20-minute city deal, showing that we don't have a 20-minute walk to any of the hubs, or even bike ride to any of the hubs. This is far south Tempe, almost Chandler. But that doesn't mean that steps can't be taken to make this a pedestrian-friendly area in a suburban context, and our clients have taken those steps. In fact, they've gone through great difficulties to take those steps. For instance, staff requested upgraded paving for onsite pedestrian connections at driveways. The appellant accommodated this request on the plan. And then the transit section of the Transportation Division requested the design and construction of a Type B bus shelter, pad, and furnishings at the existing stop location on the south side of Warner Road. And our clients also accommodated this on the plan. This is the pedestrian connection to the intersection that our clients plan to install, so that when their customers come in to get their vehicle serviced, or people at the Discount Tire come to get their vehicle serviced, and they have some time and they're feeling hungry, they can walk to the intersection, cross, and eat at the adjacent restaurants, and shop at the adjacent discount shops. Now, let's talk about the Character Area Plan. Character Area Plan is to encourage cafes and outdoor dining options and engage the pedestrian. There are a variety of uses that restaurant uses in the neighboring shopping centers that are more amenable to these types of uses. And as I said, our client has reached out to many, many restaurant operators to try to get one to locate in the plaza. They haven't succeeded at that. But having a restaurant user is not the only way to support restaurant uses. As any hungry restaurateur will tell you, what they most need is clients. And by improving the pedestrian connection from this plaza to neighboring plazas, they are providing a source of clients for those neighboring restaurants. Another part of the Character Area Plan is to enhance commercial centers and reuse of buildings and accentuate the greenup of strip malls with more trees and shade. In the past, this was a rundown old gas station, and the present is a dirt lot with a chain link fence and no trees. And in the future, our clients want to construct a brand-new service station with fresh landscaping. Let me show you what I mean. This is the past use. As you can see, no activation to the street, no pedestrian walkway, in fact, a wall that blocks pedestrian users from even accessing the intersection, and the back of the garage, without sufficient screening, backs onto the street. This is the present, rundown, chain-link fences, not pretty, not conducive to good property values. And this is what our clients want to build in the future, a small, low-traffic service center with adequate vegetation and screening. Not everywhere in Tempe needs to be Mill Avenue. There are ways to support transit uses, dining, and pedestrians in a suburban context, and our client has gone to great lengths to respect that and to work with that. By respecting the differences between the various parts of the city, the council can ensure that Tempe, for all of its uniqueness, remains a place you can still get your oil changed and make a living. This property is valued at about $2.1 million. These are the users that want to use it. It's commercial property. Without being allowed one of these uses, our client is simply going to lose the value of its property. It's going to be at $2.1 million. It's not fair. And more than that, the voters of the state of Arizona have said, it's not constitutional. So I urge this council to do the right thing, approve a use that is obvious for this parcel, and allow our clients to get into the business of building, improving, and bringing jobs to South Tempe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, I would like to ask the property owner, if they can come forward and make a presentation. And after the property owner, I'd like to have our staff come up and follow the property owner.
Hello, city council. My name is Ken Gatt. I was actually the real estate broker that was marketing this property and representing the owner. I'm an ASU grad, but I live in Phoenix. For securing Valvoline, we reached out to dozens and dozens of restaurants, retailers, directly, as well as email blast to hundreds of retailers and restaurants and the representatives. And when I say "we," it was myself and probably three or four other brokers smiling and dialing. Regarding restaurants...
(Crowd cheering)
The ones we reached out to included Bobby Barbecue Restaurant, Uptown Projects, which is like Postino, Federal Pizza, and the Windsor, Fox Restaurants with Flower Child, North, and Blanco, Oso Brewery, Humble Pie, Oregano's, Panera Bread, Chick-fil-A, In-N-Out Burger, Babo's Italian, Snooze, Barrio Queen, Pomos Pizzeria, Sushi Brokers, Los Dos Malinos, and like the gentleman said before, the VIG. Almost all of them felt the area was not right for them. And for some, they like the area, however, do not want to be at our intersection, and would rather be one mile west, where there is a bit more of an eclectic boutique vibe with restaurants and other things. They don't feel being across from Verizon, Raising Canes, and Bank, and next to a Discount Tire is conducive for a sit-down restaurant. Our intersection also did not feel right for them, primarily due to all the mainstream and discount retailers that have critical mass at the intersection, including Harbor Freight Tools, Play-Doh's used clothing, Play It Against Sports, Zip Sports Grill, Dunkin' Donuts, Raising Canes, Bashes, and EOS Fitness, and of course, Walgreens and Discount Tire, which, with their air guns on the tires, is not very good for a restaurant tenant. Like the gentleman said before, we have a very legitimate offer for the property from a car wash. Their rent is 20% higher. But given the information we got primarily about traffic and use, we chose to go with this Valvoline use. So hopefully, this is helpful.
Thank you. If we have our staff come forward. Chad, thank you. Mr. Weaver?
Mayor, Council, Chad Weaver, Community Development Department.
Be as close as you can to the microphone, please.
Will do. I don't have anything specific to report. I'm happy to answer questions. You have our report, our recommendation from the staff to the DRC was denial for the reasons you have in front of you. The DRC's decision was to deny, and we are here on appeal of that decision, so.
Counsel, have any questions for staff at this time? If not, I do have public comment cards. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Kubi?
Could you just summarize why the staff recommended the denial?
Well, in short, we don't feel it meets the use permit criteria that were set forth previously. We differ in the opinion of the applicant. We don't think it does what the neighborhood is desirous and what our generally adopted plans would call for for this space.
Councilmember Adams?
Chad, could you be more specific? Give us, you know, just state a few of the specifics behind the case, please?
So generally speaking, in terms of, there aren't a lot of technical pieces here in terms of traffic or anything that we found terribly deficient. But in terms of the land use goals set up in the Character Area Plan and the tie to the use permit criteria, one of which, item three ties back to those items. We found it failed that test.
And what is item three?
Item three is the one that, I can read it for you here, contribution to the deterioration of the neighborhood or to the downgrading of property values, which is conflict with the goals, objectives, or policies for rehab redevelopment or conservation as set forth in cities' adopted plans, general plan, and other adopted plans. So, yeah.
Councilmember Keating?
I have a question. Thank you, Chad. So Chad, it's your belief that this development would downgrade property values of the area?
Well, we certainly don't look at that specifically in terms of trying to do an appraisal of those values, but we feel it fails generally on that item, yes.
All right. Thank you, Chad. At this time, I do have some cards for the members of the public. And I'm going to call the first item, then I'm going to call a person, I'm going to use a baseball reference on deck. So first is Matt Smith. If you can come forward, please state your name, place a residence for the record, and please speak up in the microphone. And on deck is Ken Gatt.
Mr. Mayor, council, it's a pleasure. You know, for the Development Review Commission, we had quite a showing. And one of the things that was noted in our showing, not was just the neighbors who showed up and who spoke passionately about South Tempe, but it was the outreach through the digital forum. I believe you got in your package that our survey had 772 respondents from South Tempe. That was from 11 neighborhoods in 85284 and 85283. And of those 772 responses, 96.9% were not in favor of the Valvoline. I believe that was also repeated in your inboxes as well. I'm familiar with the council communicator email address, and I know that you've heard from a lot of neighbors their concerns about that as well. I hear that appeal, and I think their appeal is reasonable. I also have some deep skepticism about some of the key points of that appeal. When you talk about finding the right tenant for a neighborhood, I don't think you can have it both ways. I don't think you can dismiss and belittle the neighborhood's damaged goods because there's a Play-Doh's closet, or that there's a Zip Sports Grill, but at the same time, see that Valvoline can't wait to have access to that demographic, because it is one of the top three zip codes in the state of Arizona. I'm also skeptical of this idea that we're stuck with this broken dirt lot. Certainly, it was no one in the neighborhood who tore it down. And subsequently, it was the tearing down of the existing structure that prompted this process that allowed neighbors to say, hey, this is what I'm looking forward to in my neighborhood. Also, this question that tenants are unwilling to be there, that there's always partnerships and negotiations that can be made to secure tenants. So to act like all of these vendors, all of these restaurants were unwilling to touch South Tempe, I'm a little incredulous with that statement. I don't think it's a secret that South Tempe is passionate. I don't think it's a secret that South Tempe is passionate. This, this is not a secret. I think your inbox would reflect that. The reason why we're passionate is that this is our neighborhood. Contrary to this popular idea that we can swap a gas station for an oil shop because they kind of look and feel the same way, we have waited for that corner to become something special for a very long time. We patronize the business that was there because it was locally owned and we wanted them to succeed, but because it did not succeed, we're excited about what could happen next. So when I hear this idea that Valvoline is the only one that can go there, also dismiss the idea that Fascinations is always lurking in the neighborhood, ready to open up a naughty shop in your neighborhood. I just don't buy it. And gas stations, I'm rolling my eyes a little bit. I'm not sure if I want to believe that. Also, to the attorney, you should not use images from my website without my permission. I loved your graphics. I know because we created them. So try to be cool, bro. Okay. In conclusion, I love you guys. Today's a feisty day in South Tempe and here in North Tempe, or we'll, we'll call this the lakes. This is hard. But for Corona South Tempe, our character area, we made it very clear about what we're looking for in our, our, our community. I thank the Development Review Commission for taking that into consideration, for hearing the voice of the people in South Tempe. We want this to be a commercially viable, successful, and profitable corner for our community. I think our, our incentives can be aligned. There are so many places to open up a Valvoline, but I think South Tempe is special. And I think another visit with other potential people on that corner, if they only knew the roar of joy and anticipation for businesses, I think you could get a second meeting without any problem whatsoever. I also won't need to hit on a couple key items about our general plan 2040 and about Corona South Tempe, and also the idea of a public nuisance, because we've hit those ad nauseam. So thank you all for your patience today, and I look forward to your decision.
If I could ask everyone, no clapping, no show of emotion. Thank you. Ken Gatt? Okay. Jan Septon? Is Jan Septon? Judy Tapscott? And after Judy, it's going to be Amanda Stewart. So Amanda, be ready to be on deck if you can. Please state your name, place a residence for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Judy Tapscott. I'm the Chair of the Altamira Neighborhood Association, and we have a very active and engaged neighborhood intent on community-wide improvements. We have a history of successfully achieving neighborhood improvement through the Mary Ann Carter Grant Process, landscape along the right of ways of Warner and McLean Talk, new neighborhood signage, planting of over 125 trees, partnering with our next-door neighborhoods such as Circle G, Altamirada, Warner Estates, Estate Lot Colina, and Corona del Sol. Altamira and surrounding neighborhoods are engaged and intent on preserving and improving the areas where we live. Corona South Tempe was the first character area to develop and adopt a plan with a very specific recommendation in 2014. This two-year process was well-attended by neighbors. We as stakeholders identified priorities around connectivity, environment, development, community, and culture. Priorities were identified, and the plan was adopted and represents what the community wants. You now know through Council Communicators, letters, phone calls, over 700 petition signatures, that the overwhelming majority of neighbors see this business as inconsistent with the character area plan that we created. Staff recommended denial of this project. The DRC denied the project overwhelmingly. The neighbors do too. Please deny this request. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy. Amanda Stewart? Following Amanda is Erin O'Grady.
Try to speak loudly enough that you all can hear me. Tell me if I need to tone it down a little bit, but I do want to get a couple of points across. I'm Amanda Stewart, longtime resident of South Tempe, and I currently own two homes in Circle G. I'm actively investing in the community. I represent the Circle G Ranches community. We actually appreciate that the developers are investing $2 million in a property. I represent a neighborhood of over $160 million in investment. So we have a stake in South Tempe, and we and all of our neighboring communities do. We have, we are an executive housing community, and the last thing we need at that corner is a Valvoline. We weren't really excited about the chicken spot coming in across the street, but now we're active and we want to have a say of what's going to go into one of those hard corners. I want to go ahead and speak to some of the things the attorney had just said. When you're leasing, you send out a bunch of mass emails. I'm, come from the commercial real estate industry. You know, you talk to a few people. Talking to 16 restaurants is a joke for a hard corner. The second one is telling us that, you know, we're a rundown part of the community. Again, third highest income zip code in the state, and we're a rundown community. It's pretty sad. Telling us that a Play-Doh's closet won't, isn't compatible with a restaurant, I would think Oso would beg to differ because they actually share a standalone building with a Play-Doh's closet. I would also say that for those of you, and I'm sure all of you have been there at Vincitoreos, guess who their next-door neighbor is? Big O. I don't think that's a really, I don't think that hurts their business. So I think that they don't understand the community. I think they went in for an easy kill. They wanted a triple net tenant. They could flip in and out of this property, take down a national tenant, and they're out. But we have to live there, and we want something now that represents the character of our neighborhood. People put time and energy into that 2040 plan, and they deserve to be heard. So for the land use goal number three, for basically respecting the 2040 character area plan, for long-term economic development, and I think that's one of the reasons the 24 plan, 2040 plan was put together, is we need restaurants and destinations because that's what major tech employers want. We are at the tippy-top of that major tech corridor. We want them. We want them in Discovery Park. We want them in the ASU Research Park. We love them. We provide the executive housing that they want in, for those major employers, and we need restaurants, and we need decent restaurants or destinations. So we need to, we've done, been very successful at read, at accepting redevelopment in South Tempe. We had the old crappy 7-Eleven gas station that was redeployed as a Verizon, and it's been very successful use. They do large numbers there. Places like Vincitoreos, they've gone into space that was just old inline retail space right next to a Big O, very successful. And we've had others, other areas. I mean, obviously, you have Tempe Public Market, went into an old Circle K, did a great job. We accept those redevelopments. We love them. And I would say that any commercial real estate broker who would disagree with the Urban Land Institute, which is the premier retail development organization in the country, and they say right now, the most important development characteristic that companies are looking for and retailers looking for are live, work, play. That is that 20-minute walk or bike to a restaurant. Telling us that South Tempe, we're just a little bit less special because we don't deserve to have places that we can ride our bikes to or walk to to eat dinner or get our services is not fair. Land goal number five. So that was to provide land use transportation that reinforces the character of the entire community. Again, telling us that we're, we don't, we're not allowed to create our own hub in South Tempe is a joke. If you knew our area, you would know that Warner District is the hub of our area. So obviously, we never expected to be able to ride our bikes up to ASU or up to, you know, the city council chambers, generally speaking. And then telling us again that the land is valued at $2.1 million and that it's not fair, and that somehow we instituted takings clause is absolutely unrealistic. They are developers. They speculated. They tore down those buildings before they ever had permission to do, before they'd ever gotten approval for this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin? And then following Erin is Diane Nguyen?
My name is Erin O'Grady. I'm a resident of South Tempe, and McLean Talk and Warner is my nearest intersection.
Can you please speak up towards the microphone?
Is this better?
You need to project. We need your help.
All right, I'll do that. What I'd like to say is that we have a vision for South Tempe that I think the developer is missing out on. We believe in the city more than he does because if his marketing agent, the attorney mentioned he reached out to those 16 restaurants, and previously Ken, the marketer, said that he had 10 to 11 months to work on this, and he reached out to 16 places. I could do that in one day. Did he really try to develop this to its highest and best use when we're sitting in an area where a restaurant could gain far more taxes for our city? I doubt that. I don't think that he tried his hardest. They reached out and got a car wash, a Fascinations, or a Valvoline? This does not reflect our character area plan, as you've heard from other residents. The attorney mentioned in the past, this was a gas station. So as a result, in the future, it should be a gas station, but that's actually a moot point because our character area plan was developed after the gas station went out of business. So whatever was there before, it doesn't matter because we're looking to the future. And the residents developed this character area plan, and in that plan, the specific points are, one, encourage cafes and outdoor dining. Does Valvoline do that? Nope. Do we engage the pedestrian? Nope, not with Valvoline. You might get hit by a car coming out of there. It doesn't matter if there's less traffic than the gas station. The gas station isn't there, and that doesn't fit our character area plan anymore either. To attract unique, local-inspired shopping and dining with local character, that's out of our character area plan. It's not local. It's a nationwide chain. It doesn't inspire shopping and dining. Create gathering places that reflect culture. Valvoline doesn't do that. And so I'm just concerned because it's pretty much like we're going to force our way in with our attorneys and our deep pockets because we're the national business here, and we're going to tell you that we belong here, but we want your business. But I'm going to say, as the consumer, we have the last word, whether your deep pockets run deep or not, we don't have to go there. So in the end, we're going to have an irritated investor because the tenant doesn't match up with what the resident wants, irritated residents because this is not what they see in their character area plan, an irritated tenant because they might go out of business when everyone organizes a boycott, because if Matt Smith can generate over 700 signatures that basically speak out and say, we don't want this, and then they say, well, we're coming in anyway because we can afford to, then we'll say, well, we don't go there. And then what? You're going to stick us with a Fascinations? Well, we won't go there either. And we'll keep going through this over and over until someone starts listening to what we want. We believe in Tempe. We know what its potential is. We can compete with Scottsdale. We are here, and we're sticking by, and we're not abandoning ship to go to Scottsdale. So please respect our desires, and please represent us. Because legally, yes, you can force your way in, but we don't have to shop at your business, and we can organize efforts to work against that. So please respect our community's desires. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Winner? And then Jill Stranquist, you're going to be on deck.
Hi, I'm Diane Winner. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I thank you for the opportunity to speak out about this issue. It's very important to a lot of us. I'm in with the people on the environmental and economic concerns because this is an opportunity to clean that up. It's been there because it's been there for a long time, but it is a time to clean it up and make it a good place to be. There's, that garage wasn't taken very good care of. We would like to know that the council is interested in what the neighbors want. And I'm going to speak to you as a Circle G resident and know many of my neighbors and have talked to a lot of people, and we are not in favor of having this turn into a Valvoline. It's unappealing, and it's kind of a shading of the same thing that was there before. We'd, I'd also like to talk to you as a Realtor. I specialize in South Tempe. I have a, we have a business in Phoenix. We used to live in the central corridor, and we chose to move to Tempe and South Tempe for a reason. We liked it. We have big lots. We like our neighbors. We like our community. It has a lot of things that that Phoenix can't offer, and all the people who live in Circle G and some of the more prominent areas around there pay their taxes and do their voting. And we're looking at hoping that you will be someone who can help us try to improve our area. I know that when I take a client out, they're not saying, whoa, I hope there is an oil change station near the corner that I live on. They're not saying that. They're saying, we want to have a nice community with nice things in it, and that kind of makes me feel like it's fairly obvious that the Valvoline coming in isn't going to enhance our property values or make it something that's very appealing for people to want to move into the community. People want something different. I also would like to address the price range of many of the homes around there. People may be unaware, but there is a huge investment in people in South Tempe. The gentleman who was speaking before our group started talking said some things that basically aren't true. I own my home, and I bought a home for my mother in Altamirada, which is the condo neighborhood right next to the Walgreens and the gas station. I bought it so my mother could walk, and she could walk with friends in the neighborhood. There's nothing impeding them from going through there. So what he said is basically not true. And if any of you want a tour, I'm good at it. I'd be glad to take you through and show you that you can come out, make a left turn, walk through. There's the gas station. We want something nicer there. We are also looking at the threats that are, the veiled threats that were just made regarding a Fascinations or the other unappealing businesses that could be put in there to frighten us away from speaking to you seriously. Seriously, we don't want a Fascinations, but we don't want a Valvoline. We want something that's appropriate and enhances our property values rather than detracts from it. So I thank you for the time, and I appreciate your attention.
Thank you. Next is Jill Stranquist. And following Jill is Mario Martinez.
Good evening. I'm Jill Stranquist, and I'm from Circle G Ranches in Tempe. I want to address and just kind of remind everybody what the, what the general plan is about and what this 2040 plan that we're all talking about, and what it says. It holds the community vision for the future and is an expression of how the community wants to grow and change for the next 30 years. So as I read this and I read through the plan, I don't see how, how this could possibly be that the answer is Valvoline. The major themes to the 2040 plan, I'm not going to read it all because I'm sure you guys have, but one, is a desirable place to live, work, play throughout life. That is quoted. To retain creative, energetic vibe, attractive to local businesses, visitors, and residents alike. To build amenities essential for quality of life, such as public art, walking, biking, and parks. Support neighborhoods for their diversity and distinct character as well as, as well as use preservation and revitalization to make stronger neighborhoods. Lastly, to promote healthy community living, access, recreation, fresh food, and healthcare, and easy, accessible by walking, biking, and transit. We have defined our character area, and it does not include a Valvoline, oil, and lube. The fact that, that an all-brick building was demolished to only build a fast-food chicken joint in the same intersection as this proposed Valvoline is more than enough for us to tolerate and would have been protested if we would have been in and would have been protested if we would have been made aware. We want cafes, outdoor dining and community hubs for our neighborhoods to meet, be social, increase the desirability of the South Tempe neighborhood and keeps us from seeking out to Chandler or Scottsdale to spend our money. So to the previous presenters presenting and representing Valvoline, I challenge you on the validity, validity of those 16 restaurants that have turned you down. Please don't put the ownership of that ugly lot on us. You're the one who tore down the building. You're the one who tore down all the palm trees, trees and shrubs. And please don't threaten us with a fascinations. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario Martinez? And then Kevin Sweeney on deck.
Good evening. My name is Mario Martinez and I live in Tempe. And actually, I live in the neighborhood that's being affected by this, the Altamira neighborhood. I would also like to point out that I lived about a mile north of there. My kids went to Wagner. I mean, we're more involved with the community than I can, you know, succinctly express. I am here to request that the council uphold the DRC decision to deny a useful, a use permit to the Valvoline lube and oil. Okay? As I said, this is a residential neighborhood. I take strong exception to the attorney classifying it as anything but a residential area. I go as, it is, it is the commercial area that is closest to my house. I go there all the time for, for Discount Tire, for Valvoline, for coffee, for Pashas, for the, let's see, for the Verizon store across the street, for, let's see, the MR, the x-ray place for my kids across the street. You know, it absolutely is a neighborhood. I think that that's a very disparaging viewpoint that is designed just to promote his view, which is basically to make a buck on this. Okay? Well, I'm not against anybody making a buck. But the thing is, the, as I read the DRC decision, they determined in numerous cases that this fell short of the Tempe code and regulation and what was recommended. That's too much to overlook. Okay? Although everybody gets their oils changed to their, or they could go to other places. This place is not going to, is not going to hurt me if I can't go there. Okay? I would also like to commend the residents who organized and spoke against this project because we, it's important that their voices get heard. Tempe needs more engaged students, you know, like this so that we can get their input. And, and finally, I'd like to say, you know, I hear things about, you know, North Tempe or South Tempe, Central Tempe. I've lived in regular Tempe for 25 years and down there like for 12. My vote counts in the same place, every other place. I had a house, you know, about a mile away from here. And when I moved down there, let's say about 10 years ago, more, my opinions didn't change. You know, I mean, that, that's, I don't think, you know, as far as Tempe and, you know, speaking to someone, well, I was born when my dad was in graduate school. I've lived in 10 states in 22 years. To me, I'm used to going 3,000 miles across the country. I mean, to me, North Tempe is not too far from South Tempe. I'm sorry, I can get there today. I can get there in 40 minutes. I'd like to say, this is not just solely a Tempe issue, I mean, a South Tempe issue. It's Tempe as a whole. And I urge you, please, to, to uphold the DRC's decision to reject this use permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you. My name's Kevin Sweeney. I live in State La Colina, Northeast corner, corner in McClintock. As a resident, we don't have a lot of tools to represent our voice. The general plan, 2040, is that voice, is that tool. It's 2040. They call it 2040, it's 2040. And I just want to read something from the website that kind of memorializes this. Tempe's general plan 2040 represents the view of what Tempe will look like and how it will function as a community. As a continuation of the general plan, character area planning is specifically called upon in general plan 2040 as one of the central means to accomplish this vision and goals of the Tempe voters. Our Corona, South Tempe character area is unique, as you can hear. Using Discount Tire as an excuse to build next to it is a feeble excuse. It's not the 1995 general plan, it's a 2040 general plan. It's where are we going, not where we are at. And to say we're replacing an antiquated gas station, disagree. We are taking a blank canvas, a clean slate, and we can do anything with that area. We're not replacing a gas station, that's long gone. It's a clean slate. Frankly, I'd rather have a dirt lot there for the next 20 years than have an oil change place. I will not do, there's an oil change place to the north by a mile and to the east by a mile. We don't need more oil change places in our backyard. Last month, the Development Review Commission unanimously voted down Valvoline seven to zero. Not four to three, seven to zero. We ask that you uphold that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Salma O'Brien. And then following Salma is J.J. Taylor.
Hi, I'm Salma O'Brien and I live in South Tempe in Circle G Ranches. And I just want to ask some of our neighbors here who used to frequent that, that locally owned gas station. Who knows Duane? And who still goes to Duane? Who knows Mary, who always said, I'm cruising at a comfortable altitude today. My reason for stating that is that that was a local gas station. We knew them, owned locally by a family, a local family. Now we're asking for a big box, big chain Valvoline station to go in there. There's a difference. What we're asking for is that local connection with our community, whether to go there and have a, you know, coffee with somebody. We do that. We do a walk and bike and we like that lifestyle. So going to the dirt lot. Before they, I'll take a dirt lot too. I will take a dirt lot over a Valvoline station any day. It's unfortunate that they made it so ugly. Their tree still sticking out, they didn't even really finish the job. And I think it's a plan to make it a nice source. Just settle for anything. I'll settle for a dirt lot. And then as far as an oil station, we have a couple right around there. I have an electric car. We're moving towards a green Tempe. I think I've missed the first part of the meeting, but I understand we want a green Tempe. We want it to be sustainable. Do we really need another oil loop station? We have two in the neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. J.J. Taylor, and then following J.J. Taylor is Walt Brown.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is J.T. Taylor. Sorry, my writing's not legible. I live in Altamirata, right behind the said gas station. I am a commercial real estate broker. I'm very familiar with this corner. You know, I came up to set the record straight on some of the things that were said about the, the current owner's efforts to market this. I know that this was in Escrow twice before with different buyers who, it was probably about a period of 18 months with different buyers who had the best leasing agents in the state. CBRE, Cushman Wakefield, Velocity Retail. Each of the previous buyers had to walk away from this deal because they could not find a tenant that made sense for them to financially buy this property and move forward with the transaction. Also, I live right in the neighborhood behind it. I was not contacted for the survey that was stated with the neighbors opposing this. So I don't know who was surveyed, but it certainly wasn't me. And then I don't believe my neighbors were contacted either. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and members of council, there's a lot of passion in the room tonight. Just want to point out that this is when it gets really difficult to get a development in place that meets everybody's needs. Your plans, your general plan, and if you know my history, I had a lot to do with the one in Phoenix and Scottsdale. You got to have tools to make these things happen. As far as we can tell, the use permit is not the appropriate approach. These uses are to be presumed to be approved but for environmental issues. The staff report says we meet those environmental issues. So with that in mind, you presume as you buy property that you can do these things if you can meet all of those things. And all of the things that staff asks for, Valvoline is asking for. This is one of the Pasha's Valvolines that we'll see because they want to be here. It's the neighborhood that's here that they want to be here and they marketed for and have been interested in this property. Use permits are very, very quasi judicial. You have to show, and I don't think anybody's demonstrated that property values have gone down. You need to rezone the uses out that you don't want or you'll end up in the circumstances where some aren't allowed through a use permit but allowed by right. In this case, yes, we have to come before you. We have to show we're compatible. Compatibility is the neighborhood immediately around it. So my comments, being as a consultant to Walt Brown, you will hear a lot of passion out of this case, is based on the fact that he bought it. He knew he needed the use permit. And we feel like we've met everything and even gone beyond that. So with that, I would just like to turn it over to him and have you follow the standards of use permit because that's where you lead to loss of property value and takings issues if in fact you don't. Appreciate your time. Thank you for.
Thank you. Are you David? Are you David Ricker?
Yes. David Ricker, ex, he's a ex-city manager, city of Scottsdale, planning director for the city of Phoenix for 20 years plus. There is a lot of passion in this room. And I, I've invested in this corner because I like South Tempe. And I don't know what, you know, it's, it's funny because Matt didn't return my phone calls. We heard Matt, the neighbor, didn't actually get surveyed. Matt calls a 3,000-foot building a mega store. And I want to put all the facts on the table. We have met with neighbors. 21 people showed up at the neighborhood meeting. Matt didn't show up there. And I apologize, Matt, because I don't know where you're at. But we're very passionate about the site. We want to do the right thing. Valvoline is a 155-year-old company that decided through our negotiations after a very extensive marketing. And when, to clarify that, because they're talking about, Amanda, about the 16 tenants, we spoke to 400 tenants. And we knew the CB Richard Ellis brokers were not successful. And we knew the Colliers brokers were not successful. Valvoline decided to, with us, to scrape the entire site, re-landscape it, hide this new building. And they agreed to 100% of the city staff stipulations. And then in fact, didn't put us on consent because the neighbors love. We know that, we understand it. It's amazing to me that the planner isn't here tonight for some reason. Okay? So there's some stuff there that I think we need to talk about the facts. But I can tell you, we worked our butt off. And we have tried to do the right thing and we're here hat in hand to try to convey that. So I think we, that's all I got.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have for public comment on the Valvoline. For those that weren't, please get my attention. And those that do want to speak, if you could fill out a speaker's card, be helpful. And sir, please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Mayor, council members, my name is Rick Fee and I live in South Tempe, which I gather is fairly close to Antarctica as far as the description being way down by Chandler, et cetera. But we like living down there and a lot has been said here, I won't repeat it. I would simply say that we went through the process of defining character areas, of which ours was the first, character area number six. Having defined that, we now come to the point where we have to have the rubber meet the road, if I may use an automotive phrase here. And I think it's time either to say that the character area process is meaningful or it is not meaningful. And I appreciate you're considering that as you make your decision this evening. I urge you to reject the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards that I do have for public comment on this. I now turn it back over to Mr. Alexander Schuchter. If you can come back forward, if you've heard the public comment, would you like to address any responses or do you like to have a summary statement on this? Now's the time to do that.
Thank you, Mayor Mitchell. Appreciate that. We understand and respect that there is a character area plan in place. But that character area plan allows a diversity of uses. You heard from the resident's own mouth that they get their oil changed a mile down the street, that they get their tires rotated to Discount Tire. Drive, and as long as the community does drive cars, is going to use uses like this. And so Tempe, in its wisdom, put in place a general plan that allows a variety of uses, including uses that may not be sexy, but that are necessary. And the general plan recognizes that even such utilitarian uses can be carried out in a way that respects what MP wants to see from this city. You also heard a lot of people say, oh, I'd prefer a dirt lot. We know that there's been trouble putting tenants there, but we don't care. And it's easy to say that when you don't own the property. But that's not the way our society works. We respect property rights. We respect it when people put their hard, harder money into a place to try to make it better. My client bought this property because he knew it was zoned for uses that he could find a tenant. And one of those uses is automotive. And so I beg this council, please, respect our client's property rights. Allow them to build in South Tempe in a way that respects the character area plan and a way, work with staff to affect that. But at the end of the day, to bring in those jobs, to bring in a new building and to allow that corner to continue to thrive as a commercial center. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I don't know, I do know that, David, you spoke earlier. Do you want, you have a chance to speak again, the property owner? Staff already came up. Now I look to my council colleagues for any comments or discussions under item 682. It is a quasi judicial, so I just, if you have any comments, you heard some of the public comment, you heard our staff presentation. Yes, Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I know that Tempe Public Market and Copper and Cotton and Ghost Ranch have been huge successes in South Tempe. And there's not anything like that on Warner and McClintock at this moment. I think we need more restaurants in South Tempe. I think an outside cafe or restaurant would serve the neighborhood well. I think we need to be very careful about what businesses we place in our neighborhoods. I'm all about neighborhoods being included in the decision-making process. Our neighbors have spoken out and I plan to support our neighbors. I'll make a motion to, I'll wait on my motion. I think we wanted to talk. Thank you.
Councilmember Dean? But just, if you have comments, I just want to know, there's, there's two things we're looking at. It's either a motion to deny the appeal, so yes, what would uphold the DRC's decision to deny the use permit and the DPR? Or there'd be a motion to approve the appeal, which means if you would vote no to uphold the DRC's decision to deny the use permit and DPR. So you want a motion from me or do you want to?
So I was going to make a motion and, I don't know, do you want to do it? I do have a comment I want to make after the motion, but.
Make a motion and make a comment, either way.
All right, well, I will, I move we deny the appeal. All right, well, I will, I move we deny the appeal. Okay, second, now, now can I make a comment?
Yes.
Or after the vote?
There's a motion to deny the appeal, there's a second, and you want to make a comment?
I just want to talk about, I know it's kind of funny, but, you know, so Raising Kings was brought up a couple times, and, you know, that, that was never something that came to the council, and that was never a decision that could have been appealed, that could have been protested. So I just want to say that. It wasn't like, you know, we pulled the fast one on you all. I live down there as well, so I know how important that area is to everybody. So I just wanted to point that out, and I'll also just say, that chicken is delicious. And that's it. So with that, the motion's been made.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. So if you vote yes, it upholds the DRC's decision to deny the use permit and the DPR. If you vote no, it does the opposite. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. With that, please no clapping, thank you. All right, next item is going to be 6A3. Consider an applicant's request for reconsideration of the city council decision on September 26, 2019, to deny the appeal of an, and uphold the development plan review commission's decision to deny development plan review for a three, new story, a new three-story building, 10-lot, single-family development for Farmer Goodwin Townhomes located at 830 South Farmer Avenue. The applicant is Barry Riddell, LLC. This is not a public hearing item, but I do ask for a statement from Mr. Riddell.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I guess here's the good news, is I'm not proposing a Valvoline or a Fascinations this evening, so hopefully that helps. It does have good chicken, though, I agree. Wendy Riddell with a lot from Barry Riddell, 6750 East Camelback. A pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of Halle Capital and the Kim family. I think you know the Kims are longtime residents here in Tempe. I'm just going to give you a very quick background and then get to the heart of the issue. So really, this is all about the preservation of the Farmer Goodwin House. That's how all of this started. So back in 2005, the city council determined that it was important that that house be So in exchange for that, they granted a PAD zoning that allowed 10 townhomes with some relief on setbacks and some additional height. And that was the quid pro quo. We know that when you go back and look at the records. These are statements taken directly from the staff report. The 10 townhome units were viewed as an appropriate request, given the financial impact of preserving the historic Farmer Goodwin home. I can tell you, it's also in the development agreement, where it specifically says, "Such development will assist the developer to overcome the extraordinary costs with the rehabilitation and preservation of the house." That's the background here. And then back in 2006, there was again that development agreement, the subdivision plat. Market crashed, they weren't built. Fast forward then to 2016, my client, Kims, Halle Capital comes forward, and they come forward actually ultimately with a staff recommendation for approval and with conditions. That's what they took to the DRC. Now, what brings us here tonight, as you know, the DRC denied that request, as did council. So we're here tonight suggesting that that was not the appropriate outcome, that this needs to be reconsidered and should have been approved. And I'm required to tell you about mistake and the hardship or delay as part of that So mistake number one, and I'm going to just hit the highlight reel here, folks, but mistake number one is that the council violated my client's due process and that the appeal was not heard using the same process the original public hearing. You don't need to be a lawyer to understand this, you just need to be literate. It's in your own ordinance, where it says, "Appeal should be noticed and heard using the same procedures as the original public hearing." When you look at the DPR, when you look at the DRC, it was treated as if it was a legislative matter. It was lobbied, it was talked about. Yet somehow, when it comes to council, it's treated as quasi judicial, so it's not treated in the same way. I will also tell you, there's a 2018 case right out of Avondale that is directly on point. I would encourage you guys to read that, I would encourage you to look at it. It is unclear to me, it's unclear to others, even on the testimony tonight, what is considered public, what's quasi judicial, and why these things are being treated differently. This is a problem, and this is one of the problems Kims had in this case. I would also suggest to you that the DRC, and I was actually there that night, I was not representing the Kims, I was, but it was so unique to me and so strange, I really was very surprised by what the DRC members were saying. They literally said, these are just two quotes, and by the way, there's a gluttony of them, but they said, "I don't care what the last PAD was, I think it was a mistake. I wouldn't have approved. There's no way to make these units nice and to get 10 of them in. We'd have to do fewer to make it work." Again, this is a property right that was granted to my client back in 2005. That is not within the purview of the DRC. We are to be looking at site plan, to look at the 12 criteria established in your ordinance and evaluate it against those criteria. And then finally hardship. Because we really don't have any clear direction here, what would be considered different? Your ordinance establishes a one-year delay. So if this is not reconsidered, if this is not approved, and I should mention to you, my client will agree and has consented to all the stipulations that staff recommended. In fact, we've been working with your planning staff on submittals, and they have agreed that we've met those steps, subject to a few items that we're still figuring out, but they, I'm confident, would stand up and tell you that we're there. If we don't get this reconsidered, it is an automatic one-year delay. I think it's an unfortunate and unfair hardship to my client. So I would respectfully request that you approve it, you allow a rehearing, and ultimately an approval. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. So any comments from the council on this? So I do want to read some facts about what Ms. Riddell mentioned. So there, the appeal of the development review commission's decision to deny the development plan review for a new three-story, 10-lot family development for Farmer Goodwin Homes is located on Farmer Avenue, as we discussed. Is there any other comments from the council?
I'm going to make a... Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I mean, you know, first and foremost, I mean, I think I certainly appreciate the fact that we talk about preserving historic property. I think that's really important and something that's been taken into consideration. But tonight really is just about what you mentioned, Ms. Riddell, in regards to this reconsideration of the appeal. Was there a mistake made? Is there a hardship or delay? And so that's what's before me tonight, and that is what I'm, I'm focusing on 100%. And, and with that, and the information, materials, and, and I've taken the time to go through it all, read through it, I, I truly believe that there wasn't a mistake made and of the law or hardship or delay, and with that, I would deny the reconsideration. And with that, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to deny the reconsideration.
There is a motion to deny, and there's actually a second to deny the reconsideration. Any other comment from council?
Where, where does this go after that? It's a denial. Explain, Mayor, and maybe Judy, I mean, can you tell me what are next, what's the next move with this property then?
Sure. So under the Zoning and Development Code, the applicant waits a year, one year, in order to bring back a similar project. The applicant certainly can bring back a project that's substantially different, and I would defer to Chad Weaver, who's our community development director, to provide additional information on that.
Please.
Oh, I'm so sorry, go. Oh, I just had another question for Judy, our city attorney. Can that period of time be amended? Can there be amendment, giving the option of coming back in, you know, two months or something?
Thank you, council member, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. That time period is set out in the Zoning and Development Code. The council does have authority to consider waiving provisions in the Zoning and Development Code, but I think it might be difficult to do that midstream. We could consider changes to the Development Code if that was the council's preference.
All right, any other comments? Vice Mayor Kiwi?
Well, just, I agree so much with what Councilmember Arredondo Savage said, and we're ruling on two issues before us, and it's not about, it's almost not about the exact project anymore, and there's been all these last-minute attempts to kind of agree to all the changes that were asked for by the DRC, that were asked for by city staff, that were refused by your client. And now all of a sudden, they're, they're willing to change, but we're not ruling on that, we're ruling on these two facts before us, or the two issues before us, so that's why I'll be, I don't want to rephrase, I'll be supporting, be denying the appeal or denying...
The reconsideration.
Denying the reconsideration.
Okay, so there's a motion, and it's, Councilmember Keating?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on what Councilmember Arredondo Savage and the Vice Mayor said. I'd like to see something built there, and it's unfortunate that we can't consider, you know, what, what has been come back, what you've brought back to us, but only that was through some sort of procedural mistake or error made. And, you know, if we could bring back something sooner than a year, I would definitely be in favor of something like that, because, you know, I do want to see something built there. So we're kind of in a tough spot, because I don't like when we deny these types of things, but, you know, we have to follow, you know, the law.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. All right, next item is item 6A4, awarded construction contract to S&amp;S Paving and Construction Incorporated for the parking and expansion, pavement repairs, and flooring improvements, East Valley Bus Operations and Maintenance Facility project located at 250 West Rio Salado Parkway. Are any comments or discussions on item 6A4? Is there a motion on item 6A4?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Adams, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion does carry seven to zero. Next item is 6A5, awarded construction manager at risk construction contract for Arch and Gardner Construction LLC for the sanitary sewer collection system rehabilitation manholes, 2018 project located at various locations throughout the city. Is there any comments or discussion or a motion on item 6A5? So moved by Councilmember Chin, is there a second? Second by Vice Mayor Kiwi, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, that motion does carry. Item 6A6, adopted resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the regional public transportation authority for the lease of the East Valley Bus Operations and Maintenance Facility with only, with the only change from previous agreements being a three-year extension to the term. Is there any comments or discussion on item 6A6 or a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Adams, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Navarro. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, item 6A7, is adopted notice of intent to enter into a retail development tax incentive agreement with Silicon Valley Bank for the financing operations center at Hayden Ferry Lakeside located at 80 East Rio Salado Parkway. This does require two-thirds of council majority to vote for approval. Is there any comments or discussion?
Excuse me, Mayor, could we ask staff to provide a brief presentation? Thank you.
Maria, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm here to provide you with the factual findings to assist you in connection with the request before you to enter into a notice of intent to enter into a retail development tax incentive agreement with Silicon Valley Bank. The proposal that the city will, I'm sorry, the proposal is that the city will rebate the unrestricted portion of the transaction privilege tax or sales tax, which is currently 1.2%, that is actually collected in a total amount not to exceed $300,000 over a three-year period, provided that Silicon Valley Bank does the following: creates 300 net new jobs and maintains said jobs, makes a capital investment of $15 million, and enters into a minimum six-year lease term at Hayden Ferry Lakeside located at 80 East Rio Salado Parkway. The taxes relate to those taxes the city levies and actually collects on tenant improvements, furniture, fixtures, and equipment as provided in the capital investment for this location until December 31, 2024. Economic development concurs with the third-party verification of the financial analysis of the anticipated impact of the agreement as follows. Silicon Valley Bank is expected to generate an estimated $1.06 million in direct tax revenues to the city of Tempe and $400,000 in indirect tax revenues to the city of Tempe for a total of $1.46 million to the city of Tempe directly over a three-year period. This amount is almost five times the amount of the incentive being proposed. Finally, the bank has stated that they would not have expanded in Tempe without the incentives as, as they are altering, also considering Salt Lake City. I'm ready to answer any questions if you haven't.
Thank you, Maria. Is there any comment, any other questions for Maria? Thank you, Maria. With that, is there a motion to approve item 6A7 with the facts of the record stated by our staff?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Chin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion does carry seven to zero. Next section of the non-casette agenda is the ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no vote will be taken. Second hearing and final, second hearing and votes for these items will be scheduled for December 12, 2019. Ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing, item 6B1, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a code text amendment within the Zoning and Development Code for short-term rental ordinance consisting of a new section 3-428 and other amendments regulating vacation and short-term rentals as authorized by the state law. The applicant is the city of Tempe. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for December 12. Would the staff like to make a brief statement? If you'd like to, Mr. Leveque?
Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for hearing this item tonight. We have a request for short-term rental ordinance. This item was conducted out of the city manager's working group. We conducted public meetings, outreach, received public feedback on the matter. We also had a neighborhood advisory commission that had review. We presented this item to the Devon Review Commission, discussed the components of the request and the ordinance. We received a favorable recommendation of 7O from the DRC, and I just wanted to highlight some key points, elements proposed out of this ordinance. So what will this effectively do? It was allow the city to require contact information from owners and provide emergency contact regarding short-term rental properties. Requires the owners to update this contact information within writing within 10 days. Requires the city manager and designated to develop necessary forms for collecting this database of information, and requires that short-term rentals comply with all federal and local laws and rules and regulations. It clarifies that non-residential uses and requires that the non-residential uses be listed and displayed on the short-term rental site, and requires the owner of the short-term rental to obtain a transaction privilege tax license before offering their property for rent. Clarifies that short-term rental operator may offer their rental without the current transaction privilege tax license, and then it defines the vacation rental and short-term rental in the Zoning and Development Code.
Thank you. With that, any other, this is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this under, on this item 6B1? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or discussion from the council? Okay. Next, item 6B2, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance to transfer unencumbered budget appropriation from the city manager's office to the Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Department for the city emergency manager position. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for December 12, 2019. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to us? Could you please get our attention? Seeing none, I'll close that portion. Next, agenda items scheduled for a second public hearing and a final adoption will be considered now. These items were read and introduced on October 17, 2019, with the exception of item 6C7. So ordinance and items for second hearing and final adoption, item 6C1, is to hold a second... Item 6C1 is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending the Tempe City Code, Chapter 2, Article 5, to add Division 23, Sections 2-395 through 2-404, establishing a desert conservation commission. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this under Item 6C1? Could you please get my attention? Yes, Darlene? Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Hello, my name is Darlene Justice, and I live in Tempe for many, many years. This has been a long journey. It started with the A Mountain, Hayden Ferry, Hayden Mountain actually becoming a preserve by this, by mayor and councils. Then we, then we come to a general, our 2040 general plan, where many things were addressed about Papico Park and other desert parks. Thirdly, we have a Discover Papico Park Master Plan. The Tempe, Phoenix, Scottsdale, the Salt River Pima Indian Community were all involved with. This was one of the biggest plans that had the most community involvement. And actually, it was incorporated into the plan. We've had forums where you have supported preservation and conservation of our desert. We have meetings that were with the Tempe Parks Golf and Cemetery Commission, where Craig Hayton and Bonnie Richardson presented the possibility of having a preserve in Papico Park, and they endorsed that. This mayor and council took and put to the voters the possibility of having Papico Park preserved, and the voters passed that. Now we've come to the final, hopefully not the final, but the final thing we need in this puzzle, and that is the Desert Conservation Commission. And I really want to thank you for all the hard work you've done over the years. Thank you, Lauren, for helping us with Papico Park, because you really have the preserve. Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Jennifer. Council members, I'm calling you by your first name, I'm sorry. And Randy, for working on the Conservation Commission. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for steering everybody so that we could get the Papico Park Preserve on the ballot. All of these things, this is your legacy because a big developer wanted to put homes in Papico Park, and that's not going to happen. And I really thank you very, very much. And I think this commission will really help with the safety and security of Papico Park, the revitalization. ASU is going to be part of this, SRP is going to be part of this. They are both in Papico Park, and they can add so much to the conservation. I wanted to just say one thing, too, is that when this was all done about preserving Papico Park, this is not a hands-off preserve. This is to also preserve the activities that have gone on in that park. And that's what this commission will help with. Will help with branding and with fixing trails and bringing horses back for trail rides. We already have the trails there. We have a tunnel under Curry Road that a lot of people don't even know that we have. It will be to use Evelyn Hallman Park, which is part of the preserve. Hopefully, will prevent some more fires. We just had another fire in Evelyn Hallman Park recently. It will also have some of our folks, like SRP, will be at this table. And we won't have some other missteps that we've had over the years. This is a huge thing, and it's going to bring all the right people together. We will have someone from the Salt River Pima Indian Community on this. They know where we have archaeological sites that are so dear to all of us. I thank you very much, and I sure hope that you vote for this. I want to thank just a couple more people, and that is Stephen Methvin, who actually, we were trying to find out who could be over Papico Park Preserve. And this commission was an idea that was born. Kim Loza and Barbara Sherman have worked very hard over the years for this Papico Park. There are many, many people in this community and people that voted for the preserve. This is going to be great for A Mountain, for Papico Park, for Indian Bend Wash. All of these are desert areas. And thank you very much, and I hope you vote to pass it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darlene. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, Darlene, for your, your information. And I'm very excited about this Desert Conservation Commission. The desert parks are so special, and we are so lucky to have them in our community. I would really like to improve the visitors that come to Tempe and stay in our hotels. And instead of going to Scottsdale to hike, I'd like them to go to Papico Park and around that area because it truly is beautiful, and it just hasn't been taken care of like we want it to be. And I think this is a positive step in the right direction to, to move towards more visitors staying in Tempe and, and playing in Tempe. So thank you for your hard work also on this commission.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, just real quick, and I just want to tell you how I've enjoyed working with you on this issue and how it's going to be so strategic, just like you said. And just like I was mentioning, it's a preserve, it's part of our history, it's part of our culture, and it's part of the, the reasons why Tempe is so special. The reason why we have activities here in Tempe to have catering towards and the vision of every need out there. So I appreciate it, thank you so much.
With that, we have a, yes, Councilmember Keating?
As Ms. Justice pointed out, I was on this working group too. And I just wanted to thank you, Darlene, and Kim Gaffney Loza, and Barbara Sherman for your efforts, not only to create this commission, but the preserve. And I know you guys do clean up sort of the park. Kim was nice enough to like take me on a tour of the park and show me, you know, some of the challenges and some of the areas where the park is thriving. So this is, this is a very special and important part of Tempe. So I was very happy to be a part of this working group. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro, for bringing this forward and allowing me and Councilmember Adams to serve on it. I'll be an enthusiastic supporter of this commission.
And Darlene, I want to thank you for your work as well as obviously Kim and Barbara, and your passion for this area. And they're right, it's a, it's a legacy for all of our residents, especially North Tempe, and the work that you've done. So thank you so much. Vice Mayor Kiwi?
Yes, I know Kim Loza can't be here tonight because she's sick, so maybe she's watching from home. But just to thank her and you and so many of your neighbors, because it's not just passion, but the expertise you, you bring to this equation and the amount of, your compendium of knowledge about Papico Park, its past, present, and its future. And this wouldn't have happened without you. So thank you so much, and thank you to the working group for making this happen.
Yep, thanks to the working group. Do we have a motion for Item 6C?
Yeah, make a motion.
One is moved by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Navarro. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion does carry seven to zero. Next is Item 6C2, is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending the Tempe City Code, Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 7, Sections 2-239 through 2-240 relating to Parks Recreation Golf and Double View Cemetery Advisory Board. This is a public hearing, is there any public comment on Item 6C2? Seeing none, close that portion. Any, is there a motion from the council on Item 6C2? Is there a motion on Item 6C2? Moved by Councilmember Navarro, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Councilmember Keating? Yay?
Oh, aye.
That motion passes seven to zero. Item 6C3 is to hold a second public hearing to adopt an ordinance amend a planned area development overlay to establish the development standards and development plan review for a new 12-story hotel containing 180 keys and commercial uses for Sixth and College Hotel, located at 580 South College Avenue. The applicant is Gamage and Burnham. And I see the applicant here, Ms. Lavaz, would you like to make a statement?
Just very briefly, Mayor, members of the council for your record, my name is Monja Lavaz, from Gamage and Burnham. I am here today on behalf of 580 Partners for, does that work? Oh, I just, two seconds. I made a full presentation, so I wasn't planning to make a full presentation today. I just wanted to, Councilmember Arredondo Savage asked about the corner of Sixth and College, so I just wanted to show that we are going to have sliding glass and just the opening so that you would have kind of an in-and-out feeling at the corner so that you would be, so I just wanted to bring a rendering that showed what I was trying to describe. Yes. So that you'd be able to sit out.
She said it's going to help them. She said it.
Yeah, with the sliding glass, you can sit outside, and we enjoy the air at that corner to try to activate the corner. So I just want to make that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know we have a big agenda, so I didn't want to take a lot of time.
Anybody have any questions? The council, is there a motion on Item 6C3?
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Adams? It's been moved by Councilmember Adams and seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries seven to zero, or six to zero. Six to zero. Next is Item 6C4, is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from GID to ME4 and a planned area development overlay to establish development standards and development plan review for a new four-story mixed-use development consisting of 324 dwelling units, commercial uses for Park Broadway, located at 711 West Broadway Road. The applicant is Humantel Affiliates. This is a public hearing item. I do have one card. But first, would the applicant like to make a statement? Mr. Humantel?
I would, Charles Humantel for the record. Matt Evans is here with me from Evergreen. I apologize, my voice is somewhat gone today, but I will do the best I can. We were here at the last meeting, obviously. We talked about a number of things. I'm not going to give you the entire presentation over, but I'm going to talk about some of the things that are relevant and then address some of the issues that you raised in the last meeting. I think everyone at this, familiar with the site. It is currently a vacant Wells Fargo banking building. It's been a Wells Fargo building for many, many years. Evergreen purchased it a few years ago. And during the time that Evergreen has owned the property, Wells Fargo has decided the building is obsolete for their purposes and has moved out. They're still under lease, and soon that lease will expire, and we'll do something with the building, which would either be re-tenanting the building as it is or building what we think is a pretty exciting building that is in keeping with the Makers District. We have spent a lot of time, both understanding the site first and understanding the city's process with the Makers District. This is a fairly large site that has some natural advantages for us. It is lacking architectural interest, to say the least. But this is what was approved many years ago. Large surface parking lots, it's really back office space. And that was in keeping with what the Makers District was before it was the Makers District. This was an old industrial area that has changed significantly over time. So the industrial uses that are available for any site in Tempe are currently available for this site. Broadway Road has been a challenge. I've, I've lived here for almost 30 years myself, and not much has happened in Broadway in the last 30 years. So I applaud the council for taking time to work through the Makers District and try to come up with some new ideas, see what we can change. The palette to draw from is lacking, frankly. In the last several years, not much has been redone. The things that have been redone along Broadway between Priest and the Realrod Tracks, or Jack in the Box, and McDonald's, and Arby's, Circle K, Popeyes, and Kelly's Paper, which has since gone out of business because people don't use paper in the way they once did, which, given the sustainability report, is probably a good thing. We understood that what the council wanted is workforce housing. And there were lots of challenges with workforce housing, and I'll talk about some of those tonight. But we worked hard, and Matt worked hard in particular, in creating a workforce housing product. One of the things we know about workforce housing in pricing in general on apartments is supply and demand. The more apartments that are out there, the lower the prices will be. The fewer that are out there, the more expensive it will be. That isn't just our opinion. When Barack Obama was the President of the United States, he had a commission on affordable housing. And I'm sure you're familiar with the reports that came out of that. But the toolkit, one of the things it talks about in a number of places is making sure that you can provide more housing. You know, one of the things that's interesting about this case, and this slide is not showing up well, but we're not asking for incentives. You voted on a case a few minutes ago with some incentives. It's challenging to create workforce housing. And we're not asking you for land. If you had land, you could decide that every piece of land the city sells, they could make only workforce housing. But, but you don't have the land in this case. My client has the land. And we're not asking for a tax incentive. We're not asking for a tax rebate. And so with that comes some challenges, challenges with our financing. It's a very rare vehicle to have workforce housing, but to not have city participation. In this case, one of the things that you've asked about, and I'll talk about probably a few times tonight, is you would like guarantees that it will stay affordable. And that's a challenge for us, because you're not participating in providing us funding. We're coming up with the site. We've selected a product that we think fits, that will allow us to rent affordably. We picked a structure, for example, no parking structure, that allows the rents to stay low. And we picked a location, one that we own, that isn't in the downtown, that isn't along the light rail, that isn't along the lake. And those rents become less expensive. Why would someone pay the same rent for this area next to a dairy than with downtown? Well, we think naturally they won't. I think you've seen tonight how passionate the residents of Tempe are when they're not happy or when they are happy. And I've seen, you've seen both tonight. You've seen people that were super excited, for example, to talk about the Sustainability Commission. And you've seen people that were very unhappy with Valvoline. What's interesting in this case is you haven't heard an objection from anyone, yet you have heard support. And we've talked to a number of the folks, and you spoke with, or you heard from Mr. DeGenis at the last meeting, I don't think he's here tonight, but he spoke in favor. Littlefoot, which is a daycare center, is one of the first people we contacted with. And he's been incredibly supportive. He came to the neighborhood meeting, he spoke with Obenia Kingsbee, the planner in this case, and talked about how helpful this would be for his business. And a number of other property owners, and you certainly have those. Again, this site is outside the urban core, it's not near light rail, it's not near the lake. It's a site that, I think by your own admission, through the Makers District, you recognize needs some help. And we're excited to be the first in. And with that comes additional risk. I don't know if you can see, this projector doesn't show color particularly well, but this is a chart that comes from your city, and I'll kind of break it down piece by piece. The workforce housing range that you discuss as a staff is between 80 and 120% of the AMI. And that's not unusual, that's a federal standard, Tempe adopts that as well. In each area, in each metro area, in this case, Phoenix Mesa, Scottsdale, which includes Tempe, that area is the area that you pick the ranges from. We are proposing ranges in this area. Again, we think that not only are these the ranges that we plan to serve, we think this is the market. We think that this is a unique instance where the product that we're proposing is also the thing that you'd like to have. And that's ideal. I think it helps sustain those rents. You can see the medium income is in red, 100% is where we expect to be. I'm happy to talk in more detail about these particular ranges, but I think that we have all agreed that those are the workforce housing ranges and the numbers that we would like to reach. You've asked a number of other questions, too, and I'm going to kind of talk about those. You've asked for an affordable housing impact statement and why we didn't fill one out. The answer is that we submitted our project before such a document existed. We touched base with both your housing and your planning department after the hearing. They both said it wasn't necessary because of that, but we did nevertheless prepare a form and provide it to the city.
Ask a question, so that's the one you, sorry.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor Kiwi.
Can you go back? That's, so that's the one, Levon helped you fill it out, I believe? I spoke with Levon Lamy, our housing staff?
He provided us the document, we filled it out.
So, I'm trying to read it, sorry, it's hard.
The first page essentially talks about what are we, what are we replacing? And we're not, we're not replacing anything. There isn't housing on the site. And the second page asks for what is it we're providing? And we're providing 100% of the units that we're, will be in the workforce range.
Okay, so I guess my question, let's go all the way to that column, that last column that says, term of de-creation. So that's an issue that I've had. I mean, you brought it to us as workforce, so we didn't come and say we're requiring this, which I know is against the law in Arizona, but I do want to ask you.
That is not entirely true. We didn't bring it that way. Your staff did ask us if we could do that, and we complied.
I'm thinking the last, the presentation you made in the first hearing, you brought it forward. it forward as workforce housing product, and so I asked the question, what is the term of affordability, the term of workforce rate? And so I see the term of de-restruction, there's no time listed, so we all know that if, are we basically talking about market rate housing? It just happens to be in a more depressed area, so the market rate is effectively the workforce housing rate, but it's not workforce housing?
I'm going to continue to answer this question through the slides, but let me take a moment now and answer it as well. I think I agree with some of what you've said and disagree with other parts. We weren't the ones that suggested workforce housing first, your staff was. We agree that it makes sense, but I think, you know, we're talking about workforce housing and market rate housing, and in some cases, there's no separation, certainly I think that's true here. I think that if we built a more expensive product, it would be more expensive rents, and we might find ourselves out of the workforce housing range. In this particular case, we've elected to build a product that allows us to also be in the range of workforce, and we think that that's appropriate for this area. It allows us both to be in the market and workforce housing. You know, the rents, the workforce housing category doesn't require a government program. It often does have one, but it doesn't require one. If you don't have, and in this case, the city of Tempe isn't providing any funding, you're not providing any land, you're not providing any breaks or incentives or rebates, and so no, we're not.
Opportunity zone provided?
I'm sorry, I was.
Sorry. But you're mentioning all that you don't have as incentives, but can you tell me about the opportunity zone, opportunity there? So what does the developer receive from opportunity zones?
Well, let me finish the answer that I was giving you, and I'll certainly combine that as well. But there, because you're not giving us anything, we're not in a position, you know, we're not using government financing, so we're not, we have to go out and find commercial financing, and so we're not in a position to give you a term as to, a guarantee as to how long something will be in a particular range. You know, we're also years out, we don't know what our construction costs and other things, and so we have to deal with all those things. We think that what we're doing here tonight will do that. You're asking about the opportunities on the federal opportunity zone, this does fall within a QAC, so it qualifies for the opportunity zone, and we do expect to take advantage of that. I'm not an expert on what that will yield, and frankly, even people who are will tell you at the moment, until all the regulations are complete, it's kind of hard to tell who can take advantage of it or not. We do plan to take advantage of it, and we do plan, see, we, I mean Evergreen, plans to take advantage of it and plans to hold the property, and accordingly, they would get some benefit from that, but that certainly isn't something that's guaranteed, or that comes from the city of Tempe, in any type of product. You wouldn't have to be a workforce housing product to take advantage of that. It's a matter of development.
Councilmember Adams has a question.
Yes, I know that we can't require you to provide affordable housing with this project, but I know that we really are hoping that it will be workforce housing, at least, and I'm just wondering if you would be willing to work with us at all on the terms of the amount of years that you might be willing to have it be workforce housing. I just kind of added your own generosity.
So, it's hard for us to do that. It's hard for us to build the project and make those commitments. We have to go through a traditional funding source. When you build a traditional project that's workforce or affordable, you use one of the products. Lytech is one of them, and there are lenders that are set up to do that. There aren't lenders that are set up to do this, at least that we have access to, and so we're fearful that some deeper commitment in terms of a restriction on the property, in addition to, I think, being frankly illegal, I think it would cause us problems in being able to build the product. Mr. Evans and I have had a lot of time to talk about this, and we have a letter we'd like to present today, and I'll have you, if you don't mind, bring this to us. Mr. Evans is in charge of residential development for Evergreen. Mayor Mitchell and members of the council. Evergreen DevCo is based in the Valley and does a significant amount of our development in the metro Phoenix area, including development in the city of Tempe over the years. Our desire is to continue to develop quality projects in Tempe. Evergreen has proudly been in the development business for 40 years and has a very active charitable foundation which contributes to funding and employees, volunteer hours, and communities in which we do business. Our reputation for this council and the community at large is important to us. It is our intent to build and operate Park Broadway as a project with rents in the workforce range. We have been proud to work with your economic development staff to bring, to design a project that will put 100% of the building units in the workforce rents range. We did not come to reach this goal by accident or without work. We followed the city's direction on the Makers District with hope and excitement. Unlike most developers who own the land, unlike most developers, in this case, we own the land in this case. We have to make a business choice soon. We can leave the existing outdated commercial building as is today and lease it to new tenants on long-term leases, or we can proudly work the city to build the housing project we have proposed. With Arizona significantly expanding its residential population every day, and ASU significantly expanding its student population every year, both commercial space and residential space are in demand. We have spent considerable time and money creating a project that meets the goals set by the city for the Makers District. While the Broadway Industrial Hub General Plan amendments are vision documents, we hope to be the project that can bring them to life. We understand that being the first in comes with risk, but we believe in Tempe, and we ask you to believe in us. This project brings, with no city dollars, makers display space and workforce housing, which this council continues to state is a priority. While we understand that the city has no resources to fund the workforce housing, and that the mandate, and that to mandate affordable housing is a clear violation of state law, our building is designed to provide workforce rents, and is our intent to build a residential building where 100% of the units fall within the city of Tempe's workforce housing rental range, well beyond the initial setup lease. We envision that the rents and the AMI will rise and fall together over time, and this will keep the project, a workforce housing project, for years to come. We appreciate the opportunity to work together to have Park Broadway be the first of many projects in the Makers District that fulfills the council's goals of revitalizing this outdated industrial area and bringing workforce housing to Tempe. In short, we're doing everything we can, we're taking big risks to turn this property around. We're asking, I guess, you to trust us and believe in us as well. We know that not providing more housing only makes it more expensive. We know that it's hard to create workforce housing. We know that you have the opportunity to do it without contributing money to the pot, so to speak. And I think that's going to be hard to do, I think you're going to be hard pressed to find developers who own land in our position to do that, and we think we're in that position.
I think this is a great step in the right direction, and I'll make a motion to approve the project.
Wait, wait, Councilmember Chin?
Mr. Hugh Mantle?
Yes.
As you know, we are trying to, our community has hopes of revitalizing the Broadway corridor. As you mentioned, the first project is always risky. We need to turn dirt, though, and unless we begin agreeing to support projects to begin turning dirt, it's just a plan, and we have no action. So I appreciate you working with our economic development staff in support of the Makers District and our plans in the Broadway corridor. It's a great first step. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Edono Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I wanted to go back and reevaluate some of the things that we talked about to Mr. Hugh Mantle in regards, so I know you and I had a conversation literally about, when I was walking in today, about the police and fire medical rescue services, about the impact that we're having. We talked a lot about, this is severely underparked, in my opinion, and I don't know if you could address the alternatives that you were thinking about, or maybe Evergreen is thinking about providing in the case, whether it may be rideshare, maybe it's metro passes, what does that look like? I mean, I know we recently just approved one downtown, but they made some significant steps to, I think, accommodate their residents for the lack of parking, to make sure that they were, have the ability, they did have the ability to utilize multimodal types of transportation.
So, yes, we do, wrong slide. Let me say first.
Well, I guess I would just say, is there an update from two weeks ago?
Let me address a couple of different matters. We have taken the 20% reduction that's commonly taken for rideshare things. Our parking number is over that. We feel confident based on not only the other numbers of other projects in Tempe, but also our own experience in the Valley, that the parking that we're provided is sufficient. But you asked another question, which is, are there things that we can do to convince people not to drive, to not have vehicles? And there are, I think, two things that we're willing to do to make that happen. One is that to people who will affirm to us a vehicle in the unit, we're going to give them a reduction in rent. In other words, we'll charge people less if they don't use a parking space. The second thing that we're willing to commit to doing, and we would anyway, frankly, is transportation, and you as a Valley Metro member know this better than anyone, is changing rapidly as we discuss things. It'll take a couple of years to build this project, and so we're committed to sitting down with your transportation department as it gets near opening and talking with the folks in your transportation department to see what kind of program are available then, and adopting programs that are in place at the time.
Well, I guess I just had hoped that there'd be a little bit more clarity and maybe some things in place to be able to discuss today in regards to what those might be implemented, and I know there's opportunities to do that. I guess I do have a little heartburn with the statement, too, that Mr. Evans made in this letter, and it basically says, while we understand that the city has no resources to fund workforce housing, I really beg to differ with that. We talked about it at the last meeting, there was two things, and I believe it was part of those follow-ups, was the use of the 50% development fee reduction and the reduced, we had a little discussion, or somebody brought it up here, I don't know who did it, about maybe trying to work a little bit with the public art element, and see if we could utilize those types of funds to be able to create some affordability. So, I'm just saying, I really kind of beg to differ, and the fact that we're getting this at the last minute, I mean, I know you, you know how I feel about being able to sit up here and at the last minute try to work and make a deal. I just, I just don't feel like there was any effort from last time, some of the things that we had in regards to follow-up with what we wanted to see here today. I mean, and to me, it's all about the vision of the area, and you know, what are we doing to make sure that we are meeting the vision of the area? And I got to tell you, I really do have some concerns.
So, you asked about the 50% reduction, and I believe that only applies, at least according to your zoning code, that only applies in the Apache redevelopment area, which we are not in.
Well, I guess I would say this.
Does not apply to us.
I checked with community development to see if you've had an opportunity to at least talk with them about it, to have the discussion, and I was told no, that you were given a list of the follow-up items, but there was never any, any opportunity or whatever might have happened, but there was no connection, there was really no discussion about either one of those items.
Fairness, we've had many discussions over time with staff about what they have available and not, and the only thing is what you've mentioned, which is not, as I understand the code, available to us in this location, so we didn't ask him if it applied despite the code. As far as public art, we did talk to your public art folks, they said that generally speaking, they, we talked about doing art in a location adjacent to ours, the arts folks said that generally that's a problem because you don't have right-of-way. We have been working to talk with the folks who own Arby's, we did actually make contact today. They said that they would be willing to work with the city to provide space for public art if the city decided to go down that road.
Well, you know, again, and I just want to say to Evergreen, I think I always appreciate any developer that wants to be a part of Tempe, and I think you know that, and I always appreciate creating new partnerships and things like that, but you know, for me, this is a difficult one, and I will not be able to support this project.
Councilmember Morris?
Thank you, Mayor. I probably have to disagree. You know, we go through this process, we hear it first hearing, we ask for some things to look into, and we kind of bring a developer along, thinking that this is a product that we want to see in Tempe. You know, it's funny, because this is not our first, for a lot of us, not our first rodeo. We've seen developers come into town on their own property, we ask for certain things, they try to accommodate as best as possible, but long and short, it's supply and demand. Long and short, it's the market that's driving this stuff. We don't have an opportunity on this land because we don't own this land, so it's very hard for us to have any say on how the property is going to go about and from this point on. As we know, and as we experienced through a variety of different deals, in fact, we know that people can sell the property right after they get approval and someone else could own it. I can't control these things because of property rights. I can't, once we give approval, I can't control what happens after that unless it's tied to a process that they agree to. If they don't agree to it, that's their purview. So it's hard to sit here and say, well, I want this and I want that, when I know that the expectations of the market dictates all those things. And I can't sit here and tell you guys, this is going to be affordable for, in perpetuity. I hope it is. I hope the fact, because it's by a dairy farm, dairy plant, and other industry, this is not really a downtown Tempe-on-the-lake type of view, you know? It's very convenient and very close to a lot of different amenities. And, let me tell you this, if this district does what it's supposed to do, like you see other districts in other cities, when they organically become a place to live at because it's very cheap, and all of a sudden, this organic flair of artistic vibe starts to happen, and these other shops start to happen, guess what? Prices go up, and I can't control that. The city can't control that, that's the market that controls that. And the funny thing is, we know that, and we're going to sit here and tell someone on their product that I can't agree with this because you need to do this, this, and this. I'm just grateful that they're doing something affordable, and coming in and listening to the staff and trying to utilize what our staff recommends. Hey, you know, in our community, we have a shortage of affordability. Can you make something in that, in that market? And they come up and they do that. I also know, talking to other developers, that the market is now trending to show more affordability, because things are starting to go a little bit out of whack one way or the other. So long and short of it is, we're proving something that is going to be the character star of this area, or we're proving something that's going to be something that's going to be a staple to get this area going, if that's the wishes of the council. If not, then it's something that we need to really reconsider. So, you know, I'm going to support this product, I think it's something that is needed for Tempe, I hope it stays affordable, but once again, I can't control that, nor can this council control that, but I think it's a good product.
Ms. Marquini?
So there was a lot of excitement when this project first came to us, who first started here about it. I heard things like, we actually can do workforce housing here because the cost of the land is so much cheaper, so we really can crack this code. And I attended an affordability, affordable homes conference back in Durham, North Carolina a few weeks ago, and they told a very instructive case study about Montgomery County, Maryland. And Montgomery County, Maryland, they created a lot of affordable housing units and workforce housing units, 14,000 that were built over the past 40 years, but of that amount, 9,400 have reverted to market rates due to expiring control periods. And at the beginning, when they started to do it, they had a five-year affordability or workforce term, and then they increased it to 10 years. And then the mid-2000s, they went to 99 years, and now I think they have a new 30-year restriction each time an ownership unit is sold. 30 years for ownership units, excuse me, 99 years for rental housing. Workforce housing, when you describe a project as workforce housing, in this day and age, it comes with certain expectations, or don't call it workforce housing. That's, you know, I talked to a lot of people about this, I talked to developers who do workforce and affordable housing in the state, respected developers that we've worked with, and have said, is this a workforce project? And they said, no, it's market rate, it's workforce, because that's all the market will take in that area at this time. And so I did talk to you and ask you, would you consider doing 50%, a 50% workforce and market rate mixture, because that way you could recapture, you could look at, you know, through, an economist can look and see and track and see where you'd be in five, 10, 20 years, because with workforce housing and a commitment to that comes, becomes an opportunity to have cost of living increases as well. There are things about this project that I like, there's things, being the first project, I like that aspect of it. There's things I don't like. I think for the very first, excuse me, the very first signal project, that it doesn't necessarily send, being the first project, it should have more panache, and it basically is the same project you've done other places, or that Evergreen has done other places, just kind of plopped on this land. The aspect of the business, I think DRC asked that the Makers space be on Roosevelt and not be right on the street and Broadway, there are, you know, issues like that, so those are issues that I might use to deny, to deny the plan, but fundamentally, sorry guys, it's really distracting, sorry. I get distracted easily in my old age. But my problem is that you did bring this to us as a workforce housing plan, you decided to market it to us as a workforce housing plan, and I feel it's been a little bit of a bait and switch, and we can't require you to do it, but you're the one that came to us and said, this is workforce housing. The first read, which is the first opportunity I had to see it and hear about it, maybe you thought we were going to fall over backwards in just in wonderment and say that this is the project of our dreams, but... in just in wonderment and say that this is the project of our dreams. But if it doesn't have a term, it doesn't have a term of protection, then it, it's not what you say it is. Then just call it market rate. I might have approved it if you'd just been more straightforward and direct in your description of it. Another thing I had a problem with is that you didn't really work with staff. You wanted, staff would qualify the renters and provide that service free of charge, just to make sure that, you know, we have a list of people, we have a housing navigator that tries to house people. That housing navigator would have a list of people that would qualify and could bring you potential renters. So that saves you money. That's added value for you. But you said you thought it would take too long and you'd lose possible renters. But that wasn't a seriously conceived of idea, or else you would have had continual conversations with staff. And so that was another disappointment. And staff works with a lot of, a lot of landlords in town and tries to, to match, match residents to the appropriate housing for their income level. And then knowing this is an opportunity zone, that there will be benefits that will accrue. That's why you're here, why you want to develop this. And I was so hoping you'd come to us tonight and say, hey, we want to take a little bit of time, or maybe come back in a month and look at this. Maybe we'll do a 50% workforce, true workforce. We'll do 50% market rate. But we want to come back and have some time to really work this out and work this out with staff. I was hoping that we'd have that tonight. Because right now, given the character of that neighborhood and feeling that it does not fit in with the character and the vision that we have for the, for the Broadway Maker District, I'm a definite no tonight.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes. This project, I think, is very important to this neighborhood. We had neighborhood leaders, last time this was read, come up and be supportive of the project. It is workforce housing, and it's a great start to move in the right direction. I completely support this project, and I think that it will completely change this area for the better and give people the opportunity to have a safe place to live and something that they can afford. And it's something that the city of Tempe desperately needs. And I'm not going to nitpick about this and that. I think that it's a great project, and we need to move forward with this. And like I said earlier, I'm making a motion to approve this project.
Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hummel, and thank you, Mr. Evans. You know, I agree with kind of what's been said on both sides of this issue. You know, this is a tough one for me because it is the, the first project in the Maker District. I do think it is workforce housing. It doesn't matter how we get to those rents, whether that's government regulation, or it's, you know, what you're ended up charging of your own volition. I am worried about the lack of a deed restriction, as you know, as we've discussed. And I know the reasons why you don't believe that's feasible. You know, I was a driving force behind the Maker District, as you know, and my credibility is on the line here. You know, you've submitted a letter, Mr. Evans, and I appreciate it. We don't know each other. I don't believe we've met. I could be wrong. But, you know, my dad used to give me a lot of advice. And I never listened to any of it until I got to be about 30. And I realized he was trying to tell me a lot of smart stuff when I was growing up. And he told me that, look, you trust people until they give you a reason not to trust them. I still feel a little bit vulnerable in this position because if, if I was to vote to approve this, and then it's not what was promised, you know, that's not going to affect Mr. Evans or yourself, but it's going to have a very negative effect on me personally. You know, I appreciate what you've done, and I appreciate your commitment here that you've made. But I will say, I am, I am going to support this project, but I will be deeply and personally offended if it doesn't pan out as promised. And I'm not one, I'm not one to hold grudges, and I'm not one to, to get angry often. I'm certainly not one to make threats. But this will be about as mad as you'll ever see me get if I get burned on this. So I know, you know, Evergreen has a great reputation here in the community. I have no reason to suspect that you're going to burn us on this. I do think, you know, you're acting in good faith, and I'm going, I'm going to accept that. But I'm going to have a really, really big problem if this ends up not being what, what we, we hope it can be. This is the first project in the Maker District. The, the open space you're providing to businesses in that area is fantastic. And I think that's going to be a hub for that neighborhood and those businesses. The signage you're doing, branding the area, I'm very appreciative of. But again, there's an expectation with my support here that this is honored. And, you know, we'll see how that works. And again, I have no reason not to trust you. And so I'm going to choose to hear. But again, don't make me regret it.
I understand.
Thank you.
I, I want to comment. You know, the Maker District, the Broadway Quarter, is something that we, this council, and I was on the committee with Councilmember Navarro and Keating, and we, we had a real big vision for this area as a new Maker District. And, you know, I guess I had a little bit more expectations. I mean, the project that you're performing, and first let me say this, Evergreen's a great company. They build quality product throughout the entire valley. And I get that. And that's to my point, this project, this is a Maker District. We want something unique and different to fit within this area. And part of this vision that we had, I feel like this project does not meet up to that vision. And you're putting a market rate housing unit into basically built-to-workforce standards. I mean, that's what's happening. I, it is a tough decision because this is something that we're trying to kick off our Maker District. And obviously, we'd like to have some residential units there, possibly. But I really still think it fits the vision. So unfortunately, I'm not going to have the support of this project. So we do have a public comment, though. Mr. Jim Nelson?
Jeff.
Jeff? Oh, sorry. My pen was covering it. No, it says Jeff. I'm sorry. My pen was covering it.
Hi, I'm Jeff Nelson. I live in Phoenix for the last three years, although I grew up in the Southwest. I've been coming to the valley since the mid-'80s. I am fortunate enough to own a small strip center across the street from this development, proposed development. And I'm fortunate enough to own it because actually I lived in a Makers' District. That was an organic one, like Mr. Navarro was talking about. I was a fabricator, designer for years. I don't like speaking publicly. That's why my voice waivers. But, you know, one of the things that, I moved to Williamsburg, Brooklyn in 1995. There was nothing there. It was much like the area that they're proposing to be, kick off the development for. But one of the things that had going for it is it was much smaller industrial buildings that could be converted kind of in an ad hoc fashion. I think you have a very heavy lift in that area to make a Makers' District. And I think getting people to the area is an important first step. And one thing you'll have to remember, anybody who participates in that economy of a Maker, in small shops, small manufacturing, it requires additional workers. It requires, requires people who work in the restaurants that people, you know, go to in those areas. And so getting off the ground is the first and foremost important part. And you're going to need the housing for it. And I think to worry that it's going to potentially not remain workforce housing is a legitimate concern. It's a big concern in the valley and in the country at large. But at the same time, in many senses, what you're setting out to do, if it's were not remain workforce housing, would be just a sign of the success of your overall project. And I think their willingness to donate the retail space to the Makers' District is a boon for the community there to have an exhibition area, a place where they can, you know, something can begin to emerge for people who are going to invest in that area. You know, not just people in developing things, but people who actually occupy the spaces, make things, and make this area what you hope it will become, are going to need situations like that. And, you know, I was around the gallery situation in New York for many years. You know, I have an MFA. My wife owned a gallery. It's a terribly hard business. And if you think people can come in and just start up a gallery space in a new area like this, in one of the existing buildings, that's going to be very hard due to their large scale. And if somebody's going to develop a building that someone can afford to put a gallery in, I'm highly skeptical of that. So I think that's a great boon. I think the landscaping they're offering is very good. The housing stock may seem a little normal. But, you know, in the end, I lived in the loft for 20 years. At a certain point, you get very tired of it. It's drafty. It's cold. You know, it may sound really cool, but in the end, it's pretty nice to have a decent apartment to go home to. So I guess I understand a little bit of the, I understand a little bit of the concerns you all have and the expectations for what Evergreen might bring to the table here. But I also think they're, what they're offering is, you know, if I were in your shoes, I think they're offering much more than I would ever expected somebody to do. And so I wholeheartedly support this project and hope to see it go forward. Thanks.
Any other comments from the council?
Well, just, just one comment, what you said, they're offering way more.
I have a quick comment, real, it's just a, just a quick comment, like nothing crazy.
Does it pertain to this item?
No, but I have a.
You don't have to wait because we're about ready to get to the public comment period for you.
I just have a quick concern. There's, this has been going on for a while. We have a concern with a Tempe issue involving police.
And you can do this right after this.
The quicker we can just talk about it, the quicker we can get out.
We're almost done with this portion. We're almost done. If you give us, honestly, we are about like five minutes away. If you let us get through this, until you can have your public comment.
I'm not like trying to, you know, push, push the whatever on you, but I'm just letting you know that there's people who want to speak.
You're right. And they're going to have that opportunity. And I said at the beginning of the meeting.
Something that's a little more concerning than investments and, you know, all these rezoning things.
I would really appreciate it. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Yeah, just, just, yeah, make it quick because we, we, the family that we're talking about has already left. The family that was terrorized by police has already left. So if, yeah, just, just.
We're almost, we're about ready to let public comment happen, ma'am. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Kiwi?
Do you have something to say about this topic?
Is it about this topic?
Yes. Okay. I just wanted to say, I remember what Randy had said at a previous meeting, that the solution to affordable housing is to build more of it. And so I just really quickly wanted to ask that you approve this project.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Kiwi?
Well, just, you know, well, maybe I'm just repeating myself, but you said it's bringing more than they need to or have to. It was presented as a workforce housing project. And it's a market rate project. So that's what the market can afford. Just to be clear, that's what the market will, will afford in that area. And it happens to be workforce now. When the Maker District is built, built up, then the rents can rise accordingly. And then it will be marked, continue to be market. So I think it's just important, as I work in the affordable housing center, the issue, that we should talk about it in, in a way that reflects the kind of project it is.
What I was trying to bring up was.
Sir, you're going to have to come back up here. I can't. So we're, we do have a motion. So we're going to.
Yeah, okay.
I'll just make it very quick. And you can cut it after that. But what I was saying or wanting to refer to by that statement was just they're providing the additional space for the Makers' District to use as an exhibition space. You know, their willingness to do the landscaping, the signage and such. And, you know, I understand your position that you would like to see them have a deed restriction of some type, but that doesn't work well with private development. I won't go any further on that topic. I'm not an expert.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion. And we have a second. Now, I, I got to take, Jim, I do appreciate, or Jeff, I do appreciate your comments. I really do. So I think, given this is a first project that's going to be kicking off the Maker District, it's something I think it'd help kickstart it. I mean, my initial thought is to be against it. But I like what you said. So thank you. With that, there's a motion and there's a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
And then, so the vote is five to two in favor. With that, item 6C5 is a wholly second to file a public hearing to amend in section 31A-10 of the Tempe City Code relating to telecommunications licenses. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this on this item? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Is there a motion on item 6C5? Moved by Councilmember Keating.
A second.
Second by Councilmember Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Our motion carries. Item 6C6 is a wholly second to file a public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Tempe Life Care Village Incorporated to establish a community garden in Earnhardt Park. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this? Seeing none. Is there a motion on item 6C6?
Moved.
Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilmember Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next is item 6C7. It's a wholly second to file a public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving a development agreement and developer-owned real property located at 979 East Playa del Norte and authorizing the mayor to execute a development agreement, one or more deeds, leases, and related documents with 979 Playa del Norte LLC to effect such transaction. This is a public hearing item. Is there a motion on item 6C, well, first is there a public hearing item? Anyone in the audience wishing to address item 6C7? Seeing none. Is there a motion on item 6C7?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Adams. Second by Councilmember Chin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion does carry. I am going to go right to public appearances for I mentioned. That was less than five minutes. So if we could, we do have, I do have some cards for those that are still available here to speak. You're allowed to. I'd like to remind everyone in the audience, the guidelines for the conduct of city council meetings and for public comment periods, according to Arizona Open Leading Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed on this agenda items. Matters discussed by the public during public appearances cannot be discussed by the city council unless they are specifically listed on this agenda. Speakers must be, must be present at the podium. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Speakers visualize, and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. If you require, if you require additional reasonable accommodations under the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, please seek a staff member, and our city clerk will help you. Members of the public shall refrain from making any personal impertinent or slanderous remarks and unauthorized and boisterous remarks while addressing the city council or attending this meeting. Any unauthorized remarks will be removed from the council chambers. Clapping, stopping of feet, yelling, or any other similar demonstrations are also prohibited. Violations of these rules may result in the removal of the council chambers. So with that, Franklin, I'm going to read the cards and how I received them. Franklin Oliveri. Amaya Larry. Amira. Larry, please come forth. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Hello. My name is Samira. I live in North Phoenix. So to start off, I do want to read the demands that have been presented by Black Lives Matter, and I will read them clearly. On June 15th, Tempe Police violently barged into the Oakree family's home and repeatedly tased Yvonne Oakree while he held on to his infant, causing the infant to be tased as well. We demand an end to the violence the City of Tempe Police wreck on our communities, especially our children. Demands point one. We demand that all officers involved in tasing Mr. Oakree and his infant be fired. Point two, we demand that the City of Tempe pay all the Oakree family's fees associated with his trauma. Point three, we demand that Tempe's use of force policy prohibit physical force in the presence of children unless the child is at direct risk of harm. Physical force is not to be used on children at all. Point four, we demand that if there is an incident involving parents and children, children are not to be removed from their parent until a relative is able to be with them. Point five, we demand a change in the Tempe use of force policy so that violence and physical force must only be used if there is an imminent threat to life and is not to be used as the first order of business with anyone. Negotiation and de-escalation must be used before physical force is used. Point six, we also demand that reasonable belief be removed from throughout Tempe's use of force policy. A reasonable belief is subjective, which is problematic when dealing with a racist police force. Now, I do want to say that I have recently moved to Phoenix, and honestly, seeing the video of the Oakree family being violated and being brutalized by police, it's something that really moves you, right? And we sat here for hours, hearing y'all speak about real estate, about developments. I mean, hey, I have my opinions about the Valbeveen thing, you know, I definitely agree that. But at the end of the day, we sat here and listened to the machine just keep going, right? In no way did anybody really in here step out to listen or ask us about anything, nor did you stop your machine to hear that people are hurting in your community. So the Tempe Council, I, and Councilmember Randy, you talk about not wanting promises to be broken. When it comes to these demands, I think we deserve to hear why you should, we were telling you why you should adopt these demands. But if you don't, we need to hear why. We deserve to. We deserve to, so that y'all can address us directly. I'm sorry, I'm tired. I'm basically just trying to speak. But at the end of the day, black people are being murdered and brutalized by the police and it seems like none of you all care. So at the end of the day, to call yourselves council members, it means standing up for your community and in any of the actions, none of that has been taken to stand up for your community. Also want to comment how the police chief made a comment saying, basically taking all of the harm that was placed on this family onto the father, that is slanderous in its own right. And I think that at the end of the day, to sit here and say those things and to face this family, they deserve answers and y'all need to give to them, so.
Thank you. Next is Samuel Ray.
I'd like to give my time to the next person, please.
Well, each person gets three minutes. So Alexa Isaias?
So my name is Alexia Isaias. I'm gonna ask that I get at least five minutes, like every other person got here before me. I watched as each person came up here, each suited up person came up here, I got to talk about what they wanted to talk about. And I think I deserve the same respect as, as a member of the community, because this is a heavy topic and it deserves a little bit more than a couple minutes.
Can you place your, can you state your name of residence?
Yes, my name is Alexia Isaias. My name, my residence is in Phoenix.
Thank you.
I go to school in Tempe. And I'm here because of the same reason America came up here before me, to talk about the, the family that was terrorized by police. I've come up here several times, I don't know if anyone remembers, there's a lot of people that have consistently come out to these meetings before. I've, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of getting a little annoying, but it's kind of, it's also annoying when your community is being killed. It's more than annoying, it's, it's, it's an actual, you know, it's a form of terror. And I just want to ask you as city council members, why, why do you have this job and why do you have this position if you're gonna do nothing about it? Why, why does there, how many like people have to die before you start to realize like, hey, maybe my position here as a council member could be, could be used for good, you know? And I have my own thoughts about that. I, I could have more radical beliefs than others and I, I might not believe in the system in the same way that you guys do. But I come here to you as, you know, a person of the youth. I come here to you as a student, I come here to you as, you know, just a regular human being. And I ask that you really just take a look at your job, you take a look at who you are as a human being, because a lot of people are dying. Just last year, there was like forty, forty-something killings, forty-something shootings in Phoenix. I don't know what the number is here in Phoenix. But even if people aren't getting killed, they're being brutalized. There was a case with a young family with, that they were accused of stealing stuff from the dollar store. And the case of the Oakley family is very similar. So with the Oakley family, you've already heard what happened to them. And I just want you to think about, what if someone went into your house? What if someone got your child or came close to your child and made them feel like they were unsafe and made them feel like they were gonna die or that their dad was gonna die? Like, do you guys know how that feels? I'm guessing maybe you don't, because I, I, it's, it's, it's not something that would happen typically to, to most of you up here. This is happening to the black community, this is happening to poor communities, this is happening to people of color. And for you guys to sit up here and listen to us, it's, it's the bare minimum of what can be, what can be done. So, I mean, I know there's not a lot you guys can do, but all I want you guys to do is just think about your position. I'm, I'm nineteen years old, I have a lot of time to think about these things. And I just wonder like, how do you guys not feel affected by this emotionally? How do you guys not like look at, at children who are, who are being affected by this? How do you guys not want to, want to follow up with your, your beliefs when you see people are being terrorized like this? It's, it's not fun for us to come here and when we do come here, you guys bring a ton of fucking police? Do you think we feel safe around police when they're the ones, they're the reason why we're here? That's disgusting! That's disgusting! And you should feel ashamed of yourselves! That's all I have to say.
Okay, next is Aika Traviso. Did I pronounce that correctly? Aika?
Ilka.
I-L-K-A.
Ilka Traviso.
Okay. Jewel Valenzuela.
Hi, my name is Jewel Valenzuela and I live here in Tempe and I'm also a member of Buente Human Rights Organization. And we've been through this before with Antonio Arce. Your police crew, what they did to Antonio Arce and now they're doing to this family here, it's still in our hearts, real heavy with Antonio. Not only did, after they shot him, they went to this family's home, the police were there, they knew they had Antonio, they let his mom, she was calling his phone, your police officers kept hanging up on her, they had the phone. They also had him and were comforting her, knowing that they had him, acting like they were comforting her. They had him, took him to the hospital. They could have let his mom be with him, they didn't, they waited till time had lapsed. Then they had him for two days and did not let his family see him. So when we see these police officers and we're with our children or I'm with my grandchildren, I do not trust them. I do not trust them at all. I do not want to be in the same parks with them, I don't want to be around them. And so it's, it's not safe at all. They're not anyone that I would call for help. And now again, this has happened, our, we don't trust them, there's no, our, our brown and black people, we don't feel safe around them. And to us, the way we see them is, we see them as a gang. When I see them, I've been, I seen the way that they, when we were protesting, we were on our rights, on the sidewalk on Mill Avenue, the police officers were reaching up and grabbing and pulling people off of there. So I know, we know what our rights are, we follow, we follow the law, what we're supposed to be doing, we have a freedom of speech and they continue to break that law. They were trying to grab people. Of course, I moved myself and my granddaughter fast enough so that they wouldn't grab onto us, but they were on top of the sidewalk, they should have stayed. We weren't, we were doing exactly where we should have been, walking on the sidewalk. And we had our rights and they just stepped up on the sidewalk and tried to, tried to grab people. So we don't trust them and there is no trust. That's all I have to say.
Next speaker is Sarah Tacola.
And as long as you tried to delay and take all the time so that our crowds would thin out, it didn't work because we're still here. And we're here, you know why we're here. We're here because Tempe police's violence against children. I have been here now for multiple incidents, for multiple years, and every single time it's a child. What is wrong with you? What is wrong with the police that you like to shoot children? What is wrong with the police that you like to tase infants? And then, what's even worse than this? What's even worse than the fact that they like, that they're violent against children? And think about this, we're, we're, I'm a college student, or most of us here are college students. What does it mean when we live in a college town, when we have a violent police force who's specifically violent against children? What does it mean for our safety when we as college students have to worry about being shot by the police? You send your kid to go to college to get an education, not to be shot in the back because you're drinking underage or some other minor offense. And that's the other thing, you guys criminalize people and justify murder for simple offenses, for simple things. And, and the reality is, if the police are really the public servants that you claim them to be, it would not matter the conduct of the person, because the public servant is supposed to be trained and skilled to be able to de-escalate a situation. And yet, what does Tempe police do? What did you, Chief Moro, do, releasing a public, a meteor release while we're giving our public press conference? Yeah, that was another microaggression. And then on top of that, you have another press conference the same day as ours. And what do you do? You blame the victim. Now, most people to, at this day, understand that when a person gets raped, it's not okay to ask, what did they do? So why is it okay to ask, when a person gets shot or abused by the police, okay to ask, what did they do? Why? Why is that okay? It's not. So you need to stop blaming the victim and really take a look at your own police force. Just, just today, we, we, we had more racism, we had more violence today. When we were here outside of a meeting, we decided that we would let you finish your meeting, that we would not interrupt it from the inside, and what do you do? You send the police to sic us. It is not, and then, and, and you violated the, you violated our First Amendment rights. We were not interrupting this meeting, the meeting was going on, and yet you sent a whole, a whole force. It would look like a military. There was twenty police out there, more people than were out, outside chanting that you tried to surround us with. This is the violence that we're talking about. Now, last time that we were here, it was really sad that the only people that reached out to us was a pedophile. Why is that the only person? And Kubi, you know, I had a hard time responding to you because when I met you, you played this liberal farce that made me think that you really cared about black people. And then, when I heard you justify the murder of the fourteen-year-old, I really had a hard time even looking you in the face, because I, I guess I had believed the, the kind of pseudo-progressiveness that you play. And so, no, you did, I will acknowledge you did respond, you did reach out and I appreciate that. And we were ready to respond because I wasn't, I, I didn't want to be gaslit at the time and the thinking that you cared when you justified the murder of a fourteen-year-old. So we're ready to speak now, if you're ready to change, if you're ready to stop making excuses for your murderous police force. And when I talk about this, the gaslighting you do, this whole room, look at this room, it's got a bunch of people, you actually have an artwork there, a hands-up, don't shoot artwork. Why? Why would you keep shooting us? How does that make sense? This is what I'm talking about, gaslighting us and this pseudo-progressive facade that you put on and you pretend that you care. If you care, reach out to us. And Chin, I'm happy to see, you know, the first face of color on, on the council. I say that because, Joel, I thought you were Hispanic, but then when you refuse to speak up when your own community is being murdered, children, I realize that you identify as white. So Chin, as, as the only person of color on this council, I really, I still have some hope for you, because you haven't let us down yet. So what I need you to do is prove to us that you're different than the rest of this pseudo-liberal force. And I'm hopeful, like I said. Now, another thing that we learned was that, last time, all the times that we came out and you would always say, we can't respond to you, we can't, we can't, we can't do anything, we can't put you on the agenda. Well, according to the Open Meeting Law, ARS 38431.01H, at the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body may ask staff to review a matter or may ask that a matter be put on the future agenda. That's your laws, I got that off of your website. So if that's the case, we decided, we're, we're letting you finish this meeting. And at the end of the meeting, according to your own laws, you can put us on the agenda and that's what we're asking you to do. Put us on the agenda, show us that black lives matter at least as much as your bike lanes and park codes. Show us that. So we'll be here, we'll be waiting, we know that you can respond to us at the conclusion of a public meeting and, and we expect you to do so. And we also expect you to put us on the future agenda. And if you don't, I don't want to hear any more of this pseudo-progressive BS, because it's, it's gaslighting.
Thank you, Sarah. Hands up. Michael Renaissance Monahan.
My name is Renaissance and I'm the Minister of Communication with Black Lives Matter. And I'm here on behalf of the Oakley family. You've already heard our demands and you know why we're here. One of the things that I was very upset about is that I cannot find the police's use of force policy anywhere. However, on the website, you can find body camera footage, you can find things about parking and you can find things about stealing that come from the same procedural manual. And as many times as we have been here, that should be readily accessible, so that we can analyze and review. And I just want to draw your attention to the demand that we've listed out, where there is a revision to be made to the police's use policy. Now, every time that we've come in here, we've been like, yo, we want y'all's help to hold these officers accountable. And these officers are able to hide behind that reasonable belief clause within the police's use of force policy, when they go, they, we don't find any error or fault, they haven't violated this policy. And that policy is a problem, because we cannot hold them accountable because of that clause. The police are known, just like every other person in this country, to harbor biases. But especially when we have white officers and we have young, poor, black and brown folks, Latino folks and indigenous folks who are coming in to some of their only contact with the arm of our government being the police in some fashion or another, or G4S or something like that, like what's happening in the parks, where people who are without residence are being kicked in the face and woken up and kicked out of the parks. That we need to be able to hold these folks accountable, we have to change that policy. I'm gonna reiterate what Sarah said. We implore you to put this on the agenda. And our email is BLMPHXMETRO@gmail.com. And that's on record, so that each and every single one of you members up there on the board can reach out to us, so that we can begin working together to create a better place that is more equitable, more just, more appropriate for all of the people who live or pass through here. All of you. It's in each and every one of your hands to be able to make a difference. So with the time remaining, I'll reiterate the demands. On June 15th, Tempe Police violently barged into Oakley's family's home and repeatedly tased Yvonne Oakley while he held on to his infant son, causing the infant to be tased as well. We demand an end to the violence the city of Tempe police wreak on our communities, especially our children. Number one, we demand that the officers involved in the tasing of Mr. Oakley and his infant be fired. Number two, we demand that the city of Tempe pay all the Oakley family's fees associated with this trauma, and that includes counseling and psychological help from that trauma. Number three, we demand that Tempe's use of force policy prohibit physical force in the presence of children, unless the child is at direct risk of harm, physical force is not to be used on children at all. Number four, we demand that if there is an incident involving parents and children, children are not to be removed from their parent until a relative is able to be with them. Number five, we demand a change in the Tempe's use of force policy, so that violence and physical force must only be used if there is an imminent threat to life and is not to be used as the first order of business with anyone. Negotiation and de-escalation must be used before physical force is ever applied. Number six, we also demand that reasonable belief be removed from throughout the Tempe's use of force policy. A reasonable belief is subjective, which is problematic when dealing with a racist police force. Thank you for my time.
Next is Cecily. Please state your place of residence.
Oh, duh, sorry. Cecily.
Cecily, I live in South Phoenix, but I lived in Tempe for a long time. Um, I, again, want to reiterate the hilariousness of all these protest paintings and ACLU installation in this area right now. Um, I also can't believe we sat through all those other meeting things, and that $1,200 for a studio was considered workforce affordable rent. I can't afford that, and that's more than my mortgage for my four-bedroom house. Uh, I have been homeless before, homeless here in Tempe, uh, lived out my car. I did my ASU paperwork through a PO box. Um, we'd been kicked out of our house for my 18th birthday. Um, and so, like, affordable housing, I was very impressed with Lauren Cubey. Thank you for being very passionate about that subject. Um, I wish you could also be just as passionate about, uh, the police brutality and, uh, the, um, racism in the evident that's being shown. Um, it's systemic. It's, it's definitely something that needs to be addressed. Uh, and I really, I'm going to reiterate, and I don't want to keep people here too long, but I want to reiterate that this needs to be put on a future agenda. This needs to be addressed officially. Um, this needs to be put on, like, public comment, all that, uh, and so that it can be dealt with, um, for solutions, definitely. BML Phoenix Met, Metro has done a lot, and I'm sure they're willing to help with solutions. They definitely have a plan. They definitely have, like, um, ways to help with the addressing this racism that's systemic in the police force. Thank you.
Benjamin Cooper.
Um, my name is Benjamin Cooper. I'm from, or I live here in Tempe, um, and I just wanted to talk about, um, a few things real quick. Um, so first of all, um, I think it is unacceptable that after all of these protests and all of this conflict and strife, that we're, like, reform of this policing system has not been on the agenda at all. Like, we are mostly, like, students, or people with families, or people with lives, and we're not lawyers, we're not developers, we, this is not my job to be here. I'm here because I'm passionate about the subject. I'm really concerned with what's going on, and I think, um, I'm, um, just angered by the injustice of the situation. Um, I'm not, you know, this, this isn't for my own money or any bullshit like that. Um, so I think it's, would be courteous for you to actually, like, take, um, you, place some emphasis on this, like, say that it matters, and like, put this on the agenda so that we can be here, it can be talked about first, um, so we don't have to be waiting until 9:40 PM. Um, the second thing I want to say, and this is just goes to, like, how, um, council members, I feel, have responded to this. Um, basically, the response is just to say, like, well, there's all these rules about what we can't do. Like, we can't, um, tell the city manager how to run, how to run everything. We can't tell the police chief how to run everything. And you know what? That is true, like, that, you're not allowed to necessarily direct every single thing that they do, but you can hire and fire them. So you could fire them and get a new police chief or a new city manager who will make the changes that you want. Or you could amend the city charter to change some of those things, and, you know, you went through all of this process to make sure that, I mean, essentially, that you could get one council member who was a rapist off of the council, and I applaud that. I think that was good. You had a, a proposition, a ballot proposition, um, and you campaigned for, like, many of you campaigned for it. So you made sure that that happened, because it was a priority for you, because it looked bad. And I think that a lot of you probably resented working with rapists. Um, however, um, you've not done the same thing with, with these issues. Like, you, you just don't care. That's like, you're showing that you don't care. Like, you can say that they're, oh, this rule says this, but at the end of the day, many of those rules you can change. And so the question is, um, whether or not it actually matters enough for you to change them or to do something else about them. It's, it's not really our job to come to you and say, "Here's what you should do," like, for every single thing, like, "This is the policy," et cetera, et cetera. Like, that's supposed to be your job. Like, we, we will be evaluating whether or not what you've done worked, but, has worked, but that is your job. Um, another, another thing I want to say, um, in addition, that undermines, I think, a lot, um, some of your credibility, is that, um, for example, um, Randy, you took $1,040 from the police, uh, from the, um, Phoenix Law Enforcement Officers Association, a lobbying, uh, so basically, you took, like, lobbyist money from the Police Officers Union, which is just a horrid organization that promotes racism. Um, and you, like, you, you, you pretend to have some sort of credibility on this subject? That's fucking bullshit. Like, you, you're taking their money, so how could we possibly trust you to care about reform? Like, there, you're not dependent on us for support, you're dependent on them. Um, you, you have increased the budget, um, of this racist police force, so that they can, what, buy more fucking tanks? Buy more assault rifles?
Your time is up. Thank you. Thank you, Benjamin.
It's bullshit.
Uh, Sebastian?
Hello. I'm, uh, Sebastian Misnich, and I'm, uh, live in Tempe. Um, okay, well, I want to reiterate, you know, everyone has said things before that much better than I could, so I'm going to reiterate our demands first. So we demand that all the officers involved in tasing Mr. Oakley and his infants be fired. So that's, you know, uh, Ronald Curziale, Lindsay Fernandez, Taylor Vick, Hanson, uh, Amy Pfeiffer, and then someone named Vila, but we don't know the badge number for them. We also demand that the city of Tempe pay all the Oakley, Oakley families' fees associated with the trauma, and we demand that Tempe's use-of-force policy prohibit physical force in the presence of children, right? Unless the child is at direct, you know, risk of harm, physical force should not be used with children at all. Uh, also, we demand that if there is an incident involving parents and children, then children are not to be removed from their parent until a relative is able to be with them. We also demand a change in the Tempe use-of-force policy, so that, you know, violence and physical force must only be used if there is an imminent threat to life, and is not to be used as, you know, like, the first order of business with anyone. Um, negotiation and de-escalation must be used before physical force is used. And lastly, you know, we demand that reasonable belief be removed from throughout Tempe's use-of-force policy, because a reasonable belief is a subjective analysis. And if you're, you know, if you, if you're dealing with, like, a white supremacist organization like the Tempe Police Department, it's going to always result in, in situations like this. Um, and, and so these subjective judgments have reflected that. It has been borne out. Uh, Mr. Ivan Oakley, you know, Antonio Arce, his blood is still on your hands, Sylvia, and Mayor Mitchell. Uh, he still demands justice from the grave. Um, and, uh, all over the world right now, people are in motion, people are rising up, and people are taking back power from bodies, uh, like the Tempe City Council. And, you know, it looks small, you know, like, in Chile, it was like a fuel tax hike. You know, in Lebanon, it was just a little bit more cuts to, to social programs. Um, you know, maybe here, it'll be some people getting tased, you know, will, will cause us to, to take back power for ourselves. It's fitting that this is the 103rd, 104th anniversary of the Russian Revolution, where the Bolsheviks took power and, uh, overthrew the people that were oppressing them and instituted popular rule. And so I think that that's something that, as activists, as revolutionaries, as community members, inspire us both history and today when confronting these, like, blatant injustices. Because as Ben said, um, you're not going to change your minds. So we have the power to change them for you.
Darian Barrett.
Hello. My name is Darian Barrett. I'm a resident of Tempe. I'm going to ask nicely, uh, because Sarah Coleman reached out to me. She can't be here today. If I could have a little bit of extra time to read off something from her, it would mean a lot. It's unfortunate that we have to meet again in another time of police violence. With police murder and brutality comes the anger and frustration of the community, which leads to protests and gatherings as such. I do wish for a full, transparent investigation that involves the community for the Oakley family. It all started July 27, 2016, when Eduardo Met shot and killed Dalvin Hollins. I'm bringing this up because I have worked with the, with Sarah and the Hollins family since, since the death. I've been there when Melav Bridge was shut down in September of 2016. I've been there every time an intersection has been closed down. We all have grown close as a community, meeting the victims of Tempe violence. The Hollins family made a big impact on the community. I'm speaking on behalf of Sarah Coleman, the mother, and Priscilla, the grandmother of Dalvin Hollins. Since the 27th of July, Priscilla has been fighting pain of losing her grandson while also fighting, uh, serious cancer. So it's been non-stop pain and a non-stop battle since 2016 of 20, uh, July 27th. Unfortunately, Priscilla is in her final stages of life. So the family asked me to speak. Let's take the time to send love and prayers to Sarah Coleman and the family. Rest in peace, Dalvin. Rest in peace, Grandma Priscilla. Mike Pooley, that gun didn't kill Dalvin Hollins, and I want you to know that, because I got that picture saved for the record.
James Hill.
Hi. My name is James Hill. Ivan Oakley is like my son. And the grandkids, those are my grandkids, you know what I'm saying? And, and if you could just, now, you don't have to see the video, if you can just hear the video. I hear my grandbaby saying, "Please don't kill my daddy." I hear my grandbabies with all of this stuff, you know what I'm saying? And I'm sitting here, looking at all of you, all of y'all, as people talk. And you know what is going in this here, and it's running out of this, because y'all are paying no attention, you know what I'm saying? Now, how many black people had to die before you start paying attention? You know what I'm saying? To give respect, you must give respect. You know what I'm saying? But if it was one of you guys, oh, Lord have mercy, what would happen then? You know what I'm saying? And Chief, I heard you, I, I listened. I watched news and heard what you said. We have to retrain our police officer. Hell, they should have been trained already! You know what I'm saying? Why is you going to retrain them now? Because you know y'all had, did something wrong. You know you had did something wrong. And all you, all of y'all up here, you know what I'm saying? It don't hurt until they having somebody in your family. And you know what? God is looking at every one of y'all. He's looking at every one of y'all, and you must believe this. What you know and is doing nothing about it, it's going to be your turn. And then who are you going to talk to? You know what I'm saying? Because when I hear my grandbaby, and I know this for a fact, when I heard my grandbabies them saying what they said, and Lord knows, if I was there, I'm going to just tell you the truth, I wouldn't be talking to y'all now. I wouldn't be talking to y'all now, because I know I'd have got, y'all, that, you guys back there, ain't no telling how many y'all would have shot me. I already know this. You know, I knew I was going to be, I would have got shot, because there's no way I would let that happen to my grandkids the way I hear. I'll never forget that, you know what I'm saying? I'll never forget how I heard my grandbabies hollering. You know what I'm saying? And when I heard the officer go in the house, you know, he showed no respect. The officer, to give respect, he must give respect. He goes in cussing. What police officer that you know goes in houses cussing, no respect? Get your fucking hands behind your back. The first words come out of his mouth. No, you get the hell out of here telling his, his girl, you get the hell out of the house. How is it, you know what I'm saying? What officer goes in the house doing that? Hell, I'd have been scared too. You know what I'm saying? It's just like today, when a police stop a black man, he don't know if he should put his hands up, he don't know if he should go in his glove compartment to get this, uh, registration and stuff out. He don't know what the hell to do, you know what I'm saying? Because he might get shot. So y'all need to look into this and change this, I'm telling you. You need to look into this and change this, because I'm going to tell you like this, here, God don't know what y'all, God don't like what y'all doing. And take that to the bank.
Lisa White.
Well, I'm here, I'm Ivan Oakley's mother. Lived in Tempe a lot. My son lived in Tempe. He used to have a zip code of, uh, 85281, 85282, 85283, and the last zip code he had was 85284. He got tased. Not only did he get tased, he got arrested. And I just was able to see the video yesterday completely. He got hogtied. You don't know what hogtied is? That's when they take your hands, your feet up. He had have been tased six times prior to that. To you, Mayor, I called you first. Immediately outraged, haven't heard from you. Got a response from the chiefs, somebody. Not no response from the chief over there. It's all I wanted, is you guys to say something to me. Said, "I'm a college graduate." It's all I wanted. It's all I wanted. You know, and then you say, "Chief, you, you, you make lies up. You know, you don't know my son, because your officers never talked to him after they did all that damage to him. You don't know. You know, you don't know. Yeah, and you probably will never know, because you already made your mind up. But I suggest you do more than retrain your officers. The first officer is the one that got all this started. And that officer is not a fit. He needs to go. He's not a fit. Period. You know he's not a fit. They were high-fiving each others in the video. They left two of my grandkids on the balcony for two hours away from their mother. And then you say the baby wasn't hurt? I beg to differ. You don't sleep with them, you don't, you don't even know them. I'm there with them. They were all emotionally hurt and still is disturbed behind this. They're all in therapy and stuff. You don't know, but you made a statement without facts. Without facts. Without facts. Yeah. And your officer, by the way, didn't return the infant to the mother for about 20 minutes, for about 20 minutes. So instead of just handing that baby back off, Marcel is his name, the officer continued to hold and shake the baby for about 20 minutes, while the mother kept reaching, and she told me, that's all I know. You guys even damaged her as a mother, well, she wanted, she don't even want to make a public appearance, unfortunately. But I'm here to stand for my family, trying to help them heal. And Mayor, I'm, I just can't believe I'm looking at you, because you never responded to me. You never responded to me. And that's sad on your part.
Heather Hammer.
My name is Phil Martinez. As of today, I am a resident of Tempe, Arizona. I have, um, I protest police, as you guys know, and I've noticed some things automatically about the city. Tonight, I've had badge office, uh, badge number 444 and 23177 tell me that you instructed them to violate citizens' constitutional rights outside of this building. So let me ask you something, Judge, or let me ask you something, Mayor. Did you swear an oath to the Constitution? You did, right? When you took this? So do Republicans and Democrats, when they go before Congress, do they get the yell and scream and filibuster for hours with their freedom of speech, and we can't do nothing about it, and the people's business can't get done? Does that happen to this day? Yes, correct? So why did you stop freedom of speech outside there? Because it was impeding what in here? That's a violation of the Constitution that you swore to. And you made badge number 444 and 23177 execute that, and then threaten a group with an arresting force that went out there to show that they were going to do it, and you violated these people's constitutional rights. Not only that, I'm also noticing there's some signs around town saying you can't sit on sidewalks? Like, what the hell is going on up here? I've never been called brown, or white, by the way. Better get your act together, Navarro. Never been called brown or white. That's, that's insulting. You're Mexican. You just got called white. Goodness. You know, the reason why I moved to this town is because my cousin was killed in this town. And you know what? I had some animosity towards her, Sylvia. But when I heard that she's willing to train her police officers, ladies and gentlemen, take it! Thank you! Yes, ma'am! I, if that is true, thank you for acknowledging that. And we need to stop and listen, people, because if she's acknowledging that, yes, she, she can call me. I know, but, yes, start training them better, ma'am. And I know that this is going to seem weird, but I have a lot of experience with dealing with the police in Phoenix and Glendale. You're going to have a hard- Glendale. You're going to have a hard time ahead of you with the unions. And the only thing that's going to back you up, Mayor, is us. Because these 23177, back there laughing when a lady was up here joking around, and I called them out back there, he's laughing, they're going to turn on you. And badge 444, that's been around forever, the union's going to tell them to turn on you, because you're trying to train them better. And I'm asking you, gentlemen, tonight, and you, Mayor, stop issuing unlawful orders. Because your days are numbered here. You're done. All these unconstitutional laws, you swore an oath to the Constitution, you admitted that to me tonight. And you violated those citizens' rights. They were just outside the building, they weren't even in here. If we wanted to come in here and scream and holler, and not let nothing get done, that is our rights as citizens. And you have no right to stop our freedom of speech. What are you, a tyrant? Is that what we are? Is that what you are, Navarro? A tyrant? Get your act together, Mayor. Because I work for a multimillion dollar company. I am not just somebody that sits here. I am in this freaking city. I am responsible for bringing over $1 million in new revenue every single day, every single year. That is just my responsibility, that I bring to the city of Tempe. I can leave, I can take it out of here. Just like that. I can go somewhere else and bring in $1 million in tax revenue for somebody else. But I came here because you guys are killing kids, 14-year-olds. Please, ma'am, stop that. We will support you if you do that. You heard them. If you start training them better, we will support you. So I don't have to sit here and explain to my dead nephew's son, whenever he sees a police officer, that he ducks, because he's scared to death because his father was shot 23 times. You guys are scared. For what? I've been shot twice, stabbed in the city. I'm still alive. I never once carried a gun. I've never once shot a kid in the back either. Goodness gracious, man. Mayor, I can't wait to see you get voted out.
Next, Curtis Wood. Mr. Wood?
I'm Curtis Wood. I'm a resident of Tempe. And I'm just basically here to remind you guys that there's 100,000 or more people out there that will never interact with these guys in blue here, because they're too busy doing their job, you know, obeying the law and so forth. So I just want to make sure you know that. I understand that Mr. Oakery was given the opportunity to cooperate, but he chose instead, as a father, to pick up his own one-year-old child and use it as a human shield.
All right, let's go. You guys, everyone had a chance to speak. Everyone had a chance to speak, please, please. Wait, everyone has a chance to speak. We're listening to everybody, you included, Mr. Wood. We're including us. Wait, 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 please. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask you. All right, we are going to, we are going to stop this at the moment, right now. Mr. Dante Davidson?
Greetings in the name of the Most High. Ivan, that's my cousin. That's my family. The video that I seen, I've seen multiple videos online, you know, police brutality, murder, and stuff like that, but it really hit home when it was my cousin that had this encounter. But nonetheless, I just want to really say that we are third, fourth generation graduates from McClintock High School. We represent this city. And what they did was unexcusable and unacceptable. The profanity and the integrity that they was supposed to show and failed to do so is unacceptable. It's unacceptable. We're in a history museum. We have history at McClintock High School. We have that there. We are the ones. We are them. That officer has dirty boots on his feet when he stepped over that threshold. It was wrong. Wrong is wrong, and right is I want to make sure that my cousins and his little children, we don't, we don't use profanity. Me personally, I don't use, let's speak, let's speak with me personally. I don't use profanity around my little cousins that's running around here. And the way that that officer used all that profane language was unacceptable. And it shows his profession. And that's not profession. That is not. For a fact.
Good evening. I just want to express my condolences to the Oakery family. Terribly sorry, but what happened to the gentleman that came up before this wonderful man here? Even if, even if, which is not the case, someone was using a child as a human shield. Why would he be also putting that child in danger by committing crimes? I mean, is that, was that good parenting? Was that even sensible? In his own house, would he be committing crimes? What even justifies a cop coming into a house without a warrant at all for anybody? Would you accept that? Would you, would you, would you, would you, would you, would you, would you? I think not, because we do have a thing called Constitution that you guys apparently scored to upheld. That's part of it, I think. No? Okay. I was fortunate to be here earlier, and you're this Evergreen Project, whatever. Thank you, Ms. Cooby. Thank you, Savage, for voting against that, because I just think that teachings, oh, I trust you as long as you say I should trust you until I shouldn't trust you. I mean, I think that's just not sound knowledge. The councilman should go by, sorry to your father, and it's advice is trash. You should really do your homework and do, go beyond just blind trust. Because what if I told you, oh, I had some medicine that could make you incapable? You have no reason not to trust me. I'm perfectly healthy. Do you think you'd trust me then? So I just think that affordable housing is definitely a problem within this city that you guys don't care about either. So, but again, I want to add my voice to the many that expressed great sadness with the wonderful police. This whole, this whole get up you guys doing, really intimidating, but it's not working. Because we see, we see behind the facade of whatever you want to call this police force. It's not, it needs massive overhaul. I don't think you guys care. I would like you to prove me wrong. I would love to. And you say that there needs to be training. I mean, what were you doing before? What were you doing? What are you going through? Are you going to train him to kill more people? I mean, are you, are you going to, because before, you say you was training people for de-escalation, is tasing people at all de-escalation? I mean, is that, is that de-escalation? Or do you teach people to talk to people, like respectful human beings? Or do you tell people to get on the fucking ground, you fucking bitch? Huh? I mean, is that what you're trying to do? Because I mean, we really need a layout of what's going on, if that was or was, it's not, does not plan to be the case. So just all around badge out. So just want to make that one.
Oh, the public's watching you all. You better shape up or get out of, out of here, because we're not going to take it anymore. So I wasn't here to watch you guys violate people's constitutional rights. But the cameras around that people have that aren't under your control, those catch these violations. Enough people see them, and they will ask you to leave our offices. You think it's your corporation, your city corporation? But it's not. It's the people's. It's the people's. So basically, I noticed you kind of deleted a minute of someone's time. I would like to give two minutes to a moment of silence, or a minute, 30 seconds moment of silence for every victim of police brutality, not just in Tempe, in Phoenix, Arizona, nationwide, over 1,000 people more than, than who died in the World Trade Center. And it's people like these people that the unions protect. And the unions need to get out of here. I don't want to see the unions around, because they corrupt every one of these officers. And they can go shoot and kill someone tomorrow and still get a pension. Why is that? So I'm donating my last one minute and some time for a moment of silence. Get it right. Listen to your people and read my shirt.
Next speaker, Jamar Williams.
Thank you. I won't be too long. Like you said, my name is Jamar Williams. When people ask me where I went to school, I take pride in telling them that I went to school in Tempe. I call myself a double devil. I spend a lot of time on campus. I am an attorney with the National Lawyers Guild. I want to take a couple seconds to acknowledge this man in uniform over here. His name's Kay Hale. I asked him what his first name was, and he said Commander. That's all you need to know. And I thought to myself, why would a mother name her son Commander? And why would she spell it wrong? But Commander Hale's also doing something else that's pretty funny. He's sitting right in front of a painting, a beautiful painting of a protest. We're in a room where we're celebrating 60 years of the ACLU. But in that painting is a picture of a man holding an American flag, the same American flag that's behind all of you right now. And Commander Hale and his friends went out there and just told people to stop protesting. I find that to be extremely ironic and kind of sad. And at the National Lawyers Guild, we develop policy in a way that prioritizes people over property. And I sat here and I listened to four hours of a discussion about property interests and property rights. And people came up here and they talked passionately about property and about deals they had negotiated and development that they had spent time planning for. And you all indulged all of them and asked questions, questions that you won't be asking any of us, I imagine. You engaged them in ways you won't be engaging any of us, I imagine. And you put time into these things. You put effort into these things, and we appreciate that. But I sat there wondering, what good is all this time? What good is all this effort to create economic opportunities for people if you're not going to protect the people you're creating them for? It's sad. And it's a, it's a misprioritization. Now, it's a long weekend ahead of us. Some of you might go home tonight, and you might start getting ready for that weekend. You might rest, you might start planning, you might see your families and your loved ones and embrace them. It was a long night tonight. I hope that you think about the Oakery family. Imagine in your own homes, resting, getting ready to go to bed for the night, resting with your loved ones, spending quality time, and you hear a pounding at the door, you go to that door, and you're confronted with a police officer who's pointing a weapon in your face. That police officer starts barking orders at you. In your own home, you're confused and disoriented. And maybe your loved ones or your children are asking for your guidance, or your help, or your protection in that moment. And you get tased in your own home. And then after all that ordeal is over, you look to your police chief, and that police chief says, I'm not going to do anything about that. Please think, would you accept that? Is that good enough for you? And if you're thinking right now that, no, that's not good enough for you, and you would never put up with that, and you would definitely do something about that, please think of the Oakery family. If it's not good enough for you, it shouldn't be good enough for them. Thank you.
That's all the cards I have. We thank you for the public comment, and we thank those for being here for our council meeting tonight. With that, we are adjourned.